All to order, the Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting of September 22 to order. Want to welcome everybody down here and thank you for coming. We have a few announcements. First, if you could silence your phones, it would be great. We can get through the meeting. We really appreciate that. And I just silenced mine. And also, a couple of announcements. The first is, we do have a commissioner that his birthday is today. So I want to say Commissioner Haynes, happy birthday, my friend. And we appreciate your service to the city. And I'm not going to tell anybody what number it is.
Please do not.
Okay. Happy birthday. Well, I mean, I had a birthday. And to set the record straight, I'm not 50, but I am 48 yesterday. So, you know, thanks, you guys. I appreciate it. Just closer to 50. All right. So we're on to the adoption of the agenda. The agenda was sent out to you earlier, commissioners. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we're on to item C, which is the approval of the September 8, 2022 minutes. Those were also sent out to you earlier, commissioners. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
No motion.
There's a motion. Second, any discussion? Edits, additions, questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The minutes are adopted. And now, we're on to the recognition, item D, recognition of the council members. And I just, we take these as y'all come in. And so first, I saw Councilman Druffel. Do you want to speak now? Or you can speak now. Come on up. And, you know, turn your microphone on, I believe, councilman.
Chair, I think you said I have an hour to speak.
Oh, no. Well, first, you got to turn your microphone on. I'm sorry. And then, we'll give you, we'll give you an hour to speak.
Yeah, I just want to briefly sort of highlight Westmead Park Incorporated, 22S 204 001. I'll be back, so I won't speak too much on this right now, because I'll be back with the community. But I have a strong concern, and I'm opposed to the variance and the setback. It's a pretty difficult space to build. If you go back to 1977, it says...
It's item number 22.
We feel that most of the undeveloped lots aren't accessible due to the steep topography, which precludes the use of sewage soil absorption systems. If you take a look at the steep grade this is at, and some of the soil issues, along with all the other issues, I think we have a lot of concern, and the community does. So I'll keep it at that, and talk to you later. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate it. Next, I saw Councilman Nash. Do you want to come on up? Come on up. Welcome, councilman.
Thank you, Chairman Atkins, and Director Kempf, and distinguished commissioners. Thank you for bearing with me for a couple of minutes. Some of the best people I know have birthdays in September. Mine was Tuesday night.
I knew that.
I celebrated at the council meeting. I'm here to speak to item number 2022S 09000119. And I know this is not a rezoning, so I don't have a lot to say about this issue. But I wanted to say that Logan Ellis done a great job of working with the community. This is a kind of complicated project. It's an affordable housing project that I think we certainly want to support, as many affordable workforce housing as we can. The community has had concerns about, it's a historic African-American community, kind of came up after the Civil War. There's been some family graveyards there, burials there. The current community members are very concerned about those. I think the developer's done a lot of due diligence in regard to those grave sites. They've had dogs out and sonar. He's had people, both the state and local historic commission, work with them. And that due diligence will continue. As I understand, they're going to have people on site, so if something does turn up, they will, you know, obviously follow state law and work through that. I think it might, just to speak for the community for a little bit, I think it'd be really nice, going forward, if the developer might arrange for some historical marker to kind of recognize that historic community up there. There's going to be some land set aside for some grave sites that were found, and it might be a perfect place to have a little memorial marker. And eventually, I know you don't have control over this. So far, we really don't know what the housing's going to look like. We kind of have an idea of the concept of the street, and where the houses will be placed, but we don't have what the housing's going to look like. And the community members are concerned about their property values, want to make sure that it's something that is going to maintain the property values and the community. So hopefully, eventually, we'll see that, and hopefully, you can encourage that. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, councilman. Next, I saw Councilman Murphy. Go ahead. Come on up.
You don't have to tell me to come up. I've never been shy here. Kathleen Murphy, 231 Orlando Avenue, District 24. I would like to first support Councilman Tom Druffel with any position he is taking on any subdivisions that are coming before y'all. Because, as you heard when I served with most of you, any stormwater that is coming from his district, it's coming to my district, and more specifically, also my backyard and to Richland Creek. And so, I know that I've seen the neighbors' concerns online about a lot of the subdivisions coming kind of in his area. And I was actually, having grown up in that area, surprised that we still had some large tracts of land there. So I really ask that y'all do the extra due diligence to make sure that we are taking care of the steep slopes and stormwater runoff there. So I would appreciate that. And then, more specifically, I believe I'm still on consent with item number four. But I just wanted, I felt like it was still important to go on the record with y'all about this legislation. So it is case number 2022Z-012TX001, so a text amendment. This legislation basically came about because, in a lot of our single-family areas, most of it dealing with affordable housing issues and just rising land costs, a lot of people have taken advantage of putting a room in, over their garage, or converting their garage into a livable space. I don't have a problem necessarily if that is done within the current rules, laws, and regulations that we have. But it is important that when in single-family zoning, these garages stay a rec room, an office, an exercise room, and do not turn into a second dwelling unit. Twofold. One is, we don't have the infrastructure for it. Secondly, single-family means single-family. So what this legislation is doing is kind of cleaning up the code where it got a little gray, and some of our zoning administrators were interpreting the code and allowing second showers, allowing full kitchens. I went into what appeared to be a garage outside, and it had a kitchen bigger than mine, had a half bath on the lower floor, and a full bath on the second floor. And that's a dwelling unit. That is not, that is not an accessory use. That's not, you know, a garage use that's allowed in single-family zoning. There has been some misinterpretation and misinformation put out on this legislation, primarily because it was a little, I don't want to say sloppy, about staff putting it together. It wasn't planning staff, but it just wasn't quite proofed as well as it could have been before codes got it over to us to file. So I appreciate the planning staff working with codes and getting that cleaned up, because I think what this is going to do is it's going to prevent those second units where they are not currently allowed, by zoning, they're not allowed. And it also is going to prevent neighbors feeling like they need to spy on neighbors to turn in illegal uses. So I appreciate your support on that moving forward, and ask for approval.
Thank you, council lady. And it is on consent unless it gets bumped up.
Yes, I just want to make sure that in case there was any misinformation, we got it out now. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Councilwoman Gamble, your turn. Welcome.
Good evening, and happy birthday to you and Commissioner Hayes, and thank you all for your service. I am going to speak briefly on number 20 on your agenda, the Green Lane subdivision. This project is not a rezone. The developer is working within the current land use. However, we had several community meetings, at least two, if not three, community meetings about this project, to inform the community about it and allow the community to weigh in on the project. As a result of those meetings, the developer and applicant made changes to the plan based on concerns that the community raised regarding density and tree cover and traffic. They did decrease the number of units, I believe, from 26 to 22. They also added more trees and tree buffer to the plan, and added a sidewalk on Green Lane to address some of those traffic concerns. We are also, or as I say, I'm working with NDOT to address other concerns related to traffic outside of this particular development, but on Green Lane, and will continue to do that. As a result of many communication or engagement with the community, and not having received any opposition outside of, I believe, the property owner who lives next door is here today, and I just spoke with him, and he's still not satisfied quite with the plan. However, I believe that many of the community members that attended those meetings have expressed support for the plan, and for those reasons, I support the plan. Unfortunately, I'm not able to stay. I have another meeting and can't stay to wait until this item comes up. But wanted to let you know that there has been significant community engagement on this, and as a result of that, I do support the plan and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. And then, let's see, are there any other council members? Lisa, and I'm missing anybody? I don't think I see any more council member. I want to make sure we get... Oh, Councilman Hall. Come on up. Oh, you want to wait? Is, or... Yeah, come on up. Come on up. Sitting way in the back. I couldn't... Councilman, we need to make sure you turn your microphone on. There you go. There you go.
All right. Thank you, you guys. Appreciate you all serving, as always. I'll be very brief. I've got number 13, I believe, on the agenda. And this is just something that was done, because, as you know, most rezones in my district can be a little contentious, and so there are very few. This property was supposed to have been part of another project. It was about a year and a half long, back and forth. And we, I think, ended up maybe having about 15 community meetings over that one. Long story short, this place came available as that project had already been approved and was supposed to be Phase Two of another project. But apparently, that deal fell through at the end, and so what this does is just turn it back to the original zoning that we were changing it to with the NS, so that the community has the ability to go back through the process again. If whoever purchased a property or has a property now decides they want to develop it, that it would still go through the same process with the community meetings and design as the rest of it did. And to ensure that it is similar to what the community had already approved and was wanting on that site. So just a really simple, kind of turn back the clock a little bit, so that the community have a chance to participate if something does come forward on it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other council members? I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. All right. And so, before we move on to the next item, this is probably out of order, vice chair, but I would be remiss to say I have a birthday twin that works for the planning staff. And so I do want to say Kelly Adams and I were born almost within the same hour, same year, and so we're birthday twins, but really not twins. But I wanted to say that for Kelly, Kelly Adams. I'm sure, I'm sure she's going to be like, oh, gosh. All right. So now, we, no other council members? All right. So we are now on to item E, which is items for deferral withdrawal. Lisa, are you taking us through those today? Okay, perfect.
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal, beginning on page three of your agenda. Item number 1A, 2022 CP 003 002, Bordeaux, White's Creek, Haynes Trinity Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting. The associated case 1B, 2022 SP 043 001, 633 West Green Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 Planning Commission meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number 2, 2022 SP 040001, 2635 Gallatin Avenue Dog Daycare. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 3, 2022 SP 049001, 15th and Church. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting. Item number 5, 2007 SP 048001, Zion Hill SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number 8, 2022 SP 046001, Walton Station. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting. Item number 10, 2022 Z 088 PR 001, rezoning on North Avondale Circle. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 16, 2022 Z 099 PR 001, a rezoning request on Rural Hill Road. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Councilmember Stiles wanted me to note that she is intending to withdraw this item at council also. Post-request, it was determined that the project is vested on the property, and so she is withdrawing. Item number seven, I'm sorry, on page seven, item number 18, 2021 S 122 001, re-subdivision of Lot 18, Sharon Dell Heights. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting. And on page eight, item number 24, 2022 S 221 001, Hawks Haven. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13 meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. And did you say item four? I want to make sure. Did you? Or... No.
No, four is not deferred.
All right. So commissioners, I just want to make sure. Thank you, Lisa. So commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal, and I will read these and make sure these are correct. So items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 5, 8, not 7, 8, 10, 16, 18, and 24. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard those items for deferrals. There a motion? There's a motion. Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. We're on item F, which is now the consent agenda, which we adopt these all together. So Lisa?
Chair, I did want to mention that the October 13 meeting will be located at the Public School Administration Building, so we will not be at our normal location here for those items that were just deferred to that meeting. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. I'm going to read through the case number and the caption of the items that are on tentative consent. If there's anyone in the audience that is in opposition to an item, please raise your hand, and then that item will be presented at the time that it comes up on the agenda. Item number four, 2022 Z 012 TX 001, it's a text amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item four? Item four will be on consent. Item number six, 2017 SP 095 005, Moore Office Building. Is there anyone in opposition to item number six? Six will be on consent. Item number seven, 2019 SP 044 001, 3699 Dickerson Road. Is there anyone in opposition to item number seven? Seven will be on consent. Item number 11, 2022 Z 090 PR 001, a rezoning on Hickory Hollow Parkway. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 11? 11 will be on consent. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2022 Z 092 PR 001, a rezoning on Fourth Avenue South. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 12? 12 will be on consent. Item number 14, 2022 Z 094 PR 001, a rezoning on Cherokee Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item 14? 14, 14 will be presented. Item number 15, 2022 Z 095 PR 001, a rezoning on Bridgeway Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 15? 15 will be on consent. Item number 17, 2022 DTC 055 001, Fourth and Lee. Is there anyone in opposition to item 17? Item 17 will be presented. Item number 19, 2022 S 090001, Winston Heights Concept Plan. Is there anyone in opposition to item 19? 19 will be on consent. Item 20, 2022 S 095 001, Green Lane Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to item 20? 20 will be presented. Item number 21, 2022 S 151 001, 0, Old Hickory Boulevard. Is there anyone in opposition to item 21? 21 will be presented.
Wait, ma'am, can you come up here to the microphone so that we...
Can you?
Or can we? Yeah, she'll come.
Ma'am, I'm going to have one of us staff members talk with you.
And then we'll get, we'll make sure you're covered, get your answer question.
Item number 23, 2022 S 209 001, Old Goins Road. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 23? 23 is on consent. Do you want me to wait a second so we can...
Yeah. Yeah, let's resolve the issue. Quick. So we always try to make sure we take care of everybody's questions, so we're just going to make sure we give them just a few minutes, and we'll get right back onto the schedule, okay? To the agenda.
Let me read through one more time. So item number 20, which is the Green Lane subdivision, has been pulled from consent. Item number 21, 2022 S 151 001, which is 0, Old Hickory Boulevard. It's a concept plan to create five lots. Is there anyone in opposition to item 21? 21, it can be on consent. Okay, I'm going to read through all of the captions, and everyone, please listen, and if I read one, and that you realize that you're opposed to it, please make some, wave your hands, and my staff will keep an eye on. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. Starting on page four of your agenda, item number four, 2022 Z 012 TX 001. It's a request to amend chapters, it's a request to amend Chapter 17 of the Metropolitan Code to amend the regulations on accessory structures. Staff recommendation is to disapprove the substitute ordinance and recommend approval of a second substitute. Item number six, 2017 SP 095 001, Moore Office Building. It's a request to amend a specific plan on property located on 19th Avenue South to permit a maximum of 236,000 square feet of office use. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page five of your agenda, item number seven, 2019 SP 044 001, 3699 Dickerson Road. It's a request to rezone from CS and RS 20 to SP for property located on Dickerson Pike to permit a multifamily residential development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 11, 2022 Z 090 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from AR 2A to MUGA for property located at 5088 Hickory Hollow Parkway. Staff recommendation is to disapprove MUGA and approve MULANS. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2022 Z 092 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IWD to MULANS for properties located along Fourth Avenue South. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 15, 2022 Z 095 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from CS and R 6A for properties located on Bridgeway Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 19, 2020, on page seven, 2022 S 090001, Winston Heights Concept Plan. It's a request for concept plan approval to create 20 lots on property located on Winston Avenue and J.J. Watson Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 21, 2022 S 151 001, 0, Old Hickory Boulevard. It's a request for concept plan approval to create five lots on property located on Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 23, on page eight of your agenda, 2022 S 209 001, Old Goins Road. It's a request for final plot approval to create three lots on property located on Old Goins Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item under other business, item H, item number 25, a bonus height certification memo for 1010 Church Street. Item 26, new employee contracts for Ryan Harding and Sean Scruggs. Item number 27, employee contract renewal for Bob Murphy. Item number 28, DTC- DRC appointments. And item number 32, to accept the director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. And so commissioners, these are the following items. And Lisa, make sure that I'm correct, because there was a lot of, a lot of going through these. So items, these will be on the consent agenda and passed together. Items four, six, seven, 11, 12, 15, 19, 21, 23, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 32. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items to be passed on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Need a motion? There's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted, which means that these will be the following items to be considered. I think it's six items. It would be items number nine, 13, 14, 17, 20, and 22. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. And so, just some folks that come down, this is your first time, relax. We're nice people up here. We're volunteers, just like you. We're normal citizens. But what happens is, this is the public hearing portion. The presentation will take place, and then the applicant will have 10 minutes. They can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Then we'll have folks come up to the microphone, speak in support, and then the folks can speak in opposition after all the folks in support speak. And then we'll have the... And then we'll have the rebuttal and the council member. And then we'll close the public hearing and we'll deliberate the items. So I just want to tell you all that's kind of how, how it works and we'll make sure. And everybody gets two minutes to speak. And please, when you come up, state your name and address for the record. All right, so presentation on item nine.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Logan Elliott, the Planning Department, and I'll be presenting item nine on tonight's agenda. The request is to rezone property to a specific plan to permit a mixed-use development. And staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The subject site is owned DTC or Downtown Code, and they're proposing SP zoning. The project's located on the full block encompassed by Second Avenue South, Peabody Street, Rutledge Street, and Leah Avenue. Second Avenue South is an arterial boulevard in the major and collector street plan, and the remainder of streets are local streets. The site currently contains a recording studio with an open parcel. And the surrounding area contains a variety of residential, non-residential, and civic land uses. The policy applied to the site is T6 Downtown Neighborhood. This policy intends to maintain and create diverse downtown neighborhoods that are compatible with the general character of the surrounding historic developments, as well as the envisioned character of the new downtown developments, all while fostering appropriate transitions from less intense areas of downtown to the more intense downtown core policy area. The T6 Downtown Neighborhood areas contain, generally contain high-density residential and mixed-use development. Looking at the site plan here, the project proposes three towers, building A being 39 stories, building B being 32 stories, and building C being 29 stories. The plan, the current plan proposes, and the traffic impact study that was submitted analyzes a development scenario with a total of 899 multifamily units, 400 hotel rooms, and approximately 27,000 square feet of commercial space. However, the SP zoning as proposed does allow all uses within the Downtown Code South area. So this unit mixture could change with the final site plan development. A publicly accessible central open space integrates these three towers together, and the access points are shown on the screen here with the red arrows. Beneath the open space and beneath the three buildings is approximately 1,100 parking spaces that are being provided. Vehicular access to the site is proposed on Second Avenue, Peabody, and Rutledge Street, with all loading and service operations being below grade in the parking garage. Over half the site is publicly accessible open space, being approximately 1.71 acres, with access points on all four street frontages. And the plan provides active retail restaurant uses on the ground floor of all three buildings. Here we see the proposed elevations. The west elevation on the left shows the development as viewed from Second Avenue, and the eastern elevation on the right shows the development from Rutledge Street. Leah Avenue is the high street in the middle of the screen of both elevations, and Peabody is the low street on the edges of the screen here. The T6 Downtown Neighborhood policy describes that appropriate building height should be based on a number of factors that are specified in the Community Character Manual. And staff finds the plans to satisfy or provide the majority of these factors for considering additional building height. And some of the factors that staff finds to be particularly relevant to this project are shown on the screen here, and are as following. The proximity to other policy areas and the role of the building in transitioning between policies. The planned height of surrounding buildings and the impact on adjacent historic structures. Contribution that the building makes to the overall fabric of the neighborhood in terms of creating pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, plazas, and open space, public art, innovative stormwater management techniques, and the relationship of the height of the building to the width of the street and sidewalks, with wider streets and sidewalks generally, and ability to provide light and air between buildings and in the public realm of streets, sidewalks, walkways, paths, and open spaces. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval with all conditions. In review of the policy, the policy describes that the downtown neighborhood should transition the surrounding neighborhoods to the intensity of the downtown core policy. That's across Peabody Street here, which is, the downtown core policy is the most intense policy in the county. Also, the adjacent property across Peabody is within the Sobero District of the Downtown Code, and these properties have an unlimited building height allowance if certain conditions are satisfied. So staff finds this development to be an appropriate transition. The ground level of the proposed development is consistent with the policy as it provides pedestrian-friendly design with formerly landscaped open space. Additionally, the Downtown Code describes that this surrounding area is an open space deficient area. And it actually identifies this specific parcel or one of the parcels in the, on the site as a good candidate for future open space. And with the provision of the significant open space with this plan, this would, you know, provide an open space opportunity to the surrounding area that is currently deficient. So that completes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions they have.
Thank you, Logan. We will open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome, and you have 10 minutes. You can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
There we go. Good afternoon, Wood Drinkwater here on behalf of the applicant. You may remember me, I was here last July 28th on behalf of Second Avenue Nashville Property. I want to give some background on why we are currently pursuing an SP having already been granted an overall height modification. We were, this commission previously granted an overall height modification for essentially this project on December 9th, 2021. That decision was appealed to the Chancery Court along with this commission's decision to grant an overall height modification for Second Avenue Nashville Property, which is immediately across the street from this, from this site. That was affirmed by the Chancery Court and appealed again. It is currently before the Court of Appeals with an oral argument currently set for November 2nd. In the meantime, the applicant is, has, is facing rapidly mounting unrecoverable costs, debt service, staffing, things like that. So it is exploring and exercising all options that it has to move forward with development of this parcel, and so it is seeking an SP. As I mentioned, I was previously here before you on July 28th on behalf of Second Avenue Nashville Properties' SP application, which this commission granted. The people who are here in opposition of, of this SP application tonight are also present in opposition of Second Avenue Nashville Property. They sued Second Avenue Nashville Property, seeking to prevent them from pursuing an SP after having already been granted an overall height modification. To the extent that this commission has any hesitation or issue with granting an SP having already granted an overall height modification, this morning the Chancery Court entered an order permitting the pursuit of an SP following the granting an overall height modification. You've already seen substantially this project. You've already approved this, this project as an overall height modification. It's gone through further scrutiny by the Planning Commission staff, and it has been approved again. We would ask that you approve the, this SP. The architect Grant Euler is here to speak to you, and I believe there's a video presentation that he'd like to narrate for you.
The video is ready to go. It's running. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Secretary, and staff for the opportunity to present. You can turn the volume up. It's some nice music in the background. To present the Riley Hill Project Development, my name is Grant Euler, Principal with Gensler. And on behalf of the development team, we are excited to share the design vision for the project. This has been a collaboration with numerous stakeholders over the past 16 months. And we firmly believe the result of these efforts has created a notable project worthy of approval. The Rutledge Hill Project Development is an opportunity to create and contribute to diverse neighborhoods and offerings, compatible with envisioned character, walkable neighborhoods, and public benefit to the citizens of Nashville. Three buildings located intentionally at the corners of the 3.26 acre site, providing an open central park, 1.71 acres of publicly accessible open space with public connections on all four street frontages to the neighborhood. Open space, public plaza, pedestrian-friendly streetscapes. Relationship of buildings to the site, to the streetscape. The design provides light and air between buildings and includes thoughtful building material selections and intentional architectural detailing, harmonious with the neighborhood. 57% of the site area is open space and includes 1,100 below-grade parking spaces and locates the often unsightly loading service provisions underground, directly beneath the public open space. The three buildings. A 39-story residential building at Leah and President Ronald Reagan Way. The second building proposes a 29-story, 400-room hotel. And the third building is a 32-story residential building. Project, as noted, includes 27,000 square feet of commercial space. The design framework developed following the guidelines from Nashville Planning Principles. Honor the legacy of the site, connective partscape, pedestrian scale and texture, healthy lifestyle, and celebrate Nashville with appropriate architectural style and detailing. It's a forward-looking, aspiring, and positively contributing to Nashville's evolving transformation. Its appropriate mix of uses, unique open space, and authentic, sensible design will create a great space that will contribute to the vitality of the neighborhood of Riley Hill and the citizens of Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you all have any other speakers, sir?
No, we just simply request to reserve our time.
Yep. Reserve two minutes for rebuttal. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. And welcome. State your name and address for the record, and then you can see your time over here. We'll get the time. There we go.
Is the microphone on?
Yep.
Okay, good evening. My name is Matt Williams, and I represent the collective partnership that owns nine parcels and the majority of the five, four to five acre block outlined by Rutledge Street, Leah Avenue, Hermitage Avenue, and Middleton Street. If a specific address for ownership is needed, 34 Rutledge Street can be utilized, which is again across the intersection from the, the subject site and development. I speak tonight in full support of the staff's recommendation to approve the SP zoning for the subject development. I think the open space within the subject development represents responsible urban planning. And given Nashville's burgeoning economy and expansive downtown, responsible and practical urban planning are represented in the proposed dimensions and height modifications. I should add that Gensler, the architecture firm for the subject development that just spoke, is one of the best architecture firms in the world. And our neighborhood is lucky to have this type of investment in the area. So again, in full support of the, of our neighboring development at, at the subject site. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Members, my name is Dean Struttulie. I have multiple addresses in Nashville now. 151 Second Ave. South, 509 Second Ave. South, 600 Broadway. I'm here in full support of this project and quite excited about the continued evolution of the project. I think this board has a wonderful opportunity to continue the process of the evolving architecture in Nashville. This is a dramatic increase in the quality of architecture, especially in this neighborhood. Placing parking underground is critical for the future of Nashville. And I urge everyone on this board to consider banning podium parking. Last, you can't get enough open space in a city such as Nashville. As it continues to grow, these, these park opportunities are few and far between, and creating a 1.5 or 1.7 acre park is just stunning. And last but not least, the, the quality of the neighborhood is determined by the interaction of pedestrians with the buildings. And I would suggest that the current zone, zoning code, is, limits that ability. And having this much open space, this kind of critical mass, and this kind of retail encourages people to interact with these buildings and with a project of this size and nature. So thank you, in full support.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Director, Commissioners, my name is Brian Taylor. I live at 5317 Overton Road. For the last six years, prior to that, the previous 14, I lived downtown. I lived in this neighborhood. I'm here to speak in support and would urge your approval today. I think, based on your most recent actions to approve the development that just happened across the street, across Second Avenue, the support for this one would fall along those same lines for a lot of the same reasons. Density and open space. Those are two things that don't generally come together. And I think if you looked at the bigger picture of what's happening on Second Avenue in Sobero with this project and the Congress Group project that you previously approved just across the street, you'd be hard-pressed in this city to find any location, any two mutually exclusive developments that provide the kind of density that these two projects have with the amount of open space that they provide. The focus that both developers have put on the amenities for the pedestrian, the, the movement of traffic off of the street, parking off the street underground, I think should be heavily commended. Again, I lived downtown for 14 years, and I'm not sure that at any one point in time I ever had a concern with my sightlines. I know there are some concerns and oppositions. I think, I think it's a bit short-sighted to think that you move downtown in an urban environment with the kind of growth that we've had as a city over the last decade and think that you're not going to have sightline issues at some point, considering we are a downtown area. It is an, it's an urban area that's, that continues to be ripe for this kind of development. This is the right kind of development we need as a city. It's the right focus, and I urge your approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Make sure we get everybody. All right, now we are, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Jacob Klobow. I'm an attorney with the Nashville Bar, and I represent a group of residents in the City Lights condominium building directly across the street from item nine on tonight's agenda. Andrew Decker, Greg Brettz, and Stephen Snyder, who's here with me tonight. And you'll hear from Mr. Snyder in a minute. I'm mostly up here to talk about a couple of different things, part of which is some stuff we've already heard about. You know, this commission is pretty familiar with this project, just like it's familiar with the Second and Peabody project, having already granted height modification. It's under the DTC and now granting the exact same change for the SPs. It's not a surprise to this commission that there's obviously a lawsuit about that that's pending in the Tennessee Court of Appeals. And as my colleague, Mr. Drinkwater, pointed out, there's also a lawsuit pending against Second Avenue, the development and the Second and Peabody site for the SP application in that case. I think Mr. Drinkwater and I have a little bit of a disagreement about the court's order from this morning saying it's okay to use, or that an SP is an appropriate vehicle for this type of development in this context. I won't bore the commission with the details, but I think that the important takeaway is that the court did not dismiss the residence lawsuit. In fact, it stayed the litigation until the Metro Council takes action with respect to the SP. It said, you know, this was just an advisory opinion basically issued by the Planning Commission, and now it's up to, you know, three readings and a vote in City Council. So the, the action stayed with that respect, one. And two, the action stayed until the plaintiffs, the residents in this case, add some parties. They add Metro Council, and they add this commission that litigation, you know, for determination. determination as to whether or not an SP zone is the appropriate vehicle to use in this context to deal with this kind of change. So I think there's a little bit of a disagreement there, and like I said, I want to try to be brief on that issue. That opinion just came out this morning. But I think that's important for members of this commission to consider. You know, I know these are long meetings, and they typically go well into the evening. I'm very pleased that we were the first item out of the gate on the, on the non-consent agenda. You know, and so I do want to keep my comments brief, but, you know, I think it's important to talk about, you know, why are we even here? I think everyone knows that, you know, this site's in the DTC, it's in the Rutledge Hill sub-district. Height requirements, there are seven stories, counting the bonus grant of floors, but that doesn't apply to this site. It doesn't apply to the cumulus site, which has already received the height modification. If the developer wanted to go tomorrow and start construction, they could. There's no stay-in-place as a result of the litigation in the first lawsuit. They haven't done so, and instead, they have sought this SP as a kind of belt-and-suspenders method to deal with their project. More importantly than that, members of the commission, what we really think's happening here, or what is happening here in the position of the residents, is this is really an end-around, right? So there's a court, there's an issue, a matter pending in the Court of Appeals as to whether or not the height modification in the DTC was done properly. And, you know, the, there's some concern about whether or not that's the case. Rather than letting that matter play out in the Tennessee Court of Appeals, instead, the developers here have decided to pursue an SP, totally change the zoning, and move that Court of Appeals matter. You know, and I would strongly caution the commission to not pursue that. I really think that in this matter, you know, the Planning Commission should do what the Planning Commission does and follow the plan, follow the height requirements. There are, there are procedures in place to grant height modifications within certain means, and using the SP process wholesale to change those rules and to circumvent those rules is not what we should be doing as a city, and I'd strongly urge the commission to reject Item 9 on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Anyone else in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
I'd like five, but I know I only get two. Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, my name's Steve Snyder. Unlike the others you've heard in support of the project, I live across the street. I live in 20 Rutledge in City Lights. I want to acknowledge the developers' approach here tonight, and I commend them for recognizing the risk that they run relying on a modification of standards, where the standards to be modified are nearly 600% of the underlying rules and regulations. Because as a reminder, this location is in the downtown code, but it's not in the downtown core. It's in a downtown neighborhood, which is Rutledge Hill. And you, through the planning process, have thoughtfully designated downtown neighborhoods, thoughtfully identified characteristics for those downtown neighborhoods, which include height limits. And this exceeds those height limits in such a dramatic form and is unique to this location. There's no other place in Nashville where this modification of standards has been conducted to this extreme. I want to move on to the scheme that they're now putting in front of you to take this to a special plan, a specific plan. They have, in, in the, in your report, you've identified this as being an area deficient of green space. Well, if this area is deficient of green space, tell me what the deficiency is and how this meets it. The right approach would be to consider recommending to Metro that they use the tools available to take the entire area into green space, because it would create the largest park south of Broadway inside the interstate highway system. Secondly, they talk about, or it's mentioned in the application or in the, in the report that this is, that they've satisfied a majority of the conditions for such a height modification. I'd like, in your deliberations for it to be articulated, which conditions are not being satisfied, so we know in the future which ones are ignorable as the commission considers this application. Finally, this is a really lovely project. It's just on the wrong side of the street. If this were on the other side of Peabody, there wouldn't be an issue. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Make sure we get to everybody. I don't see anyone else, so rebuttal? Two minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. We were asked while we're here tonight, Mr. Clabot asked while we're here. Well, we're here to further development in Nashville. We think this is a project that Nashville is worthy of, and it's worthy of Nashville. We look forward to Metro Nashville joining and perhaps defending the Metro Code in that lawsuit, and especially the portion of the code that allows an SP to be applied to any property in Davidson County. And delays notwithstanding, we simply refuse to be prohibited from developing this because of a couple of people who live in downtown Nashville that did not foresee their, their views being blocked with future development. We urge you to approve this project, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, I didn't see the councilman here.
We do have a letter from the councilman.
Oh, well, Lisa, do we have a letter from the councilmember?
Hi, excuse me. Hi, yes, we did receive correspondence from Councilmember O'Connell indicating his support for the project.
Thank you. And so, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, you want to go first?
So you're not going to ask our esteemed legal counsel to maybe give us some guidance?
I'm getting anxious. So yes, Alex needs to lead us off here and give us the status of where we are.
Sure. I'll go ahead and say that, generally speaking, the applicant's recitation of the procedural posture of the lawsuits is accurate. Right now, the overall height modification challenge on both the Second and Peabody and Rutledge, that's at the Court of Appeals. Again, they're, they're waiting, they filed their briefs, they're waiting their oral argument. That's a bit of a separate process, but it's worth mentioning here because it relates to the same property. If you remember, at the meeting where the Second and Peabody SP was approved, Director, Legal Director Wally Dietz showed up and stated Legal's position that there was nothing that prohibited this body from approving an SP, even though you previously approved overall height modification on the same property. And Legal's position with respect to this property is, is the same as it was for that. Nothing has changed in the meantime, except something that would actually further this body's ability to approve an SP, which is the case that was talked about today, where ultimately, the, it's still pending, there's still some counts that are still being considered by the Chance Re Court, but the Chance Re Court's order today dismissed one count, finding that the processes for overall height modification and for an SP approval are sufficiently different to dismiss a race-to-be argued argument. So, Legal's position is the same as it was for Second and Peabody. You may approve an SP on top of the overall height modification.
Thank you, Alex. Sorry, I was jumping ahead, Vice Chairs. We appreciate it.
No, 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 I was, there was a lot to interpret there. You know, I, I mean, we can revisit the plan, we can, we can revisit the open space and all of the criteria that we looked at the first time with the height modification, but, you know, I think we determined when we approved the height modification that this was an appropriate project for this site, and my opinion of that hasn't changed. So I am in support of staff's recommendation in light of the counsel, legal counsel we received.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I follow exact same sentiment as Vice Chair Farr. This project, SP, is right location, adjacent to unlimited height, and the public amenities such as this open space really are, especially privately maintained, public amenity is a great asset. Not only that, you know, added convenience for the story of the, you know, adjacent neighbor walkability is great. So, you know, our overall goal is growth and preservation. And if we try to preserve historic structures such as Second Avenue, which is historically limited the height, we have to put the density where it's appropriate. And I think this is appropriate location, so I'm for support.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Chair. Vividly recall the presentation the last time that we had. I thought the video was really great. One of the things that really struck me by the, from the original presentation, a little back, was the visual of how this building would relate and, and I think, kind of frame some of the remaining historic structures in the area. And I thought that was a really great part of the presentation last time. I noted in the correspondence that we received in support of this application that part of that was from the owner of one of those buildings, which is adjacent to the site. So I generally agree with that sentiment, that we can have very modern or contemporary architectural styles, even at great height, and in certain contexts, those can work with and can even enhance the surrounding architectural fabric that's around it. So I think this, this application does that very well. One of the things that I saw a little bit of, not in our written correspondence, but in some of the other commentary, I guess, on this, this, about this case, is with regard to the bus stop location, because Second Avenue is a major route for Wego, and I know that, that it is a constrained one and is going to be increasingly constrained. I do note in the recommendations from NDOT that, that the development would need to coordinate with NDOT for an improved bus stop as part of the development of the site. I also anticipate that we will hear some, what I hope to be instructive guidance from NDOT with regard to the Connect Downtown project, looking at overall mobility within the downtown area to help, hopefully to help us get those buses moving a little bit faster than, than they are today, because we know they're so slow, being bogged down in traffic otherwise. But as I said, we, we approved it previously. I think all of the, the things that I found in support last time, I find in support this time, and I've had a little bit more time to look at that mobility piece, and especially with NDOT, since that time, conducting a little bit more study for mobility in the downtown area. I remain in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henley?
I would like to say, my opinion on it is that, you know, there's a, there's a compromise that comes with, with growth of, of all types. And I think, you know, here, we've, we've really taken that on in terms of engaging the public realm, bringing in a lot of activity in an area that doesn't have it. I think increasing the walkability for this part of our city is, is fantastic. And walkability also does mean beauty and reprieve. And I think, you know, one of the things that we struggle with as a city, particularly when you walk in our downtown, is we do have some mega-block type of, of development and potentially could have that expanded as we look at trying to cap our heights. And so I think this is a trade-off that's appropriate. And echoing my fellow commissioners, I think we've went through this a few times. I feel inclined to support staff's recommendation, and I do look forward to seeing this amount of, of, you know, publicly accessible space in the areas we're creating in downtown.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifton?
I have nothing to add to what you're saying.
Commissioner Haynes?
So, for the record, Logan, remind all of us by right, what are the allowable heights without the SP?
So currently, they have an overall height modification that approves this project, so that is currently permitted.
And prior to that overall height modification, what were the approved heights?
Seven stories.
So, I'm, I'm not going to change my opinion on this. I think this project is fantastic. I've worked with Gensler. It's elegant. I think it's in the wrong location. And I think this body has an obligation to our city to better regulate height bonuses. So I will be voting against this.
Thank you. We are ready for a motion.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yeah, Vice Chair, questions? We're still in discussion, so...
I guess it's a general question, but I know we are having discussions about how we go forward with bonus height modifications. And at this point in time, we're not, we're not, I don't exactly know the status, but we're not generally approving them right now? Or we're looking at them carefully?
So I think an out-and-out moratorium would have, on height modifications, would have required some action from council, because council has given the process for the downtown code and delegated some of those aspects to the Planning Commission. And so what we have been doing is working internally, Joni's here, the, the design studio team who oversees the downtown code has been, we've had one work session with the commission, and we've begun conversations with stakeholders about what a revision to the downtown code would look like that addresses height modifications. It would need to go up to council pending the steps, the, the direction from the commission. And we are looking at tiers of height. We're evaluating the kinds of factors that should be considered. We acknowledge that the zoning code is dynamic by nature, so we do need a way of evolving our review of projects based on conditions on the ground and on the city's priorities and the like. And so we are working towards that, and we're happy to schedule another meeting with the commission to give more specific detail about what we're considering and get your feedback. But we are doing what you asked, which is beginning stakeholder discussions about what a height modification changes might look like.
So it's, you know, it's, I mean, I know we've seen now three of these projects and, and, you know, with, with the same basic issue with the height modification that started it. Obviously, there's a new phase with, with the conversion to ESPs. But I still feel like it's safe to say that any other future request will be looked at within, you know, within the appropriate context for the site, that this is not, shouldn't be considered the precedent we're setting for this entire area, that we're going to have nothing but 39-story buildings going through here. You'll, I mean, until there's some sort of a change, you will be looking at each project individually. And we've made the decision that this is the appropriate project for this site, and I think that's the right thing to stand behind. But I definitely understand Commissioner Haynes' concerns, and I think that we do need to be very cognizant about where we are allowing growth to occur. And, you know, while we need the density, I fully agree with that, there will be some question about, you know, is, should it be 39 stories? Should it be 24 stories? And I assume that those are the kinds of things that we're going to be working towards, so that as more growth happens in this area, you know, we're not basing it just on what's happening with these three projects, but we're going to be looking at it more holistically going forward. Yes. Okay.
Very good point, Vice Chair. And before we get to a motion, I, I just, I feel like, looking back when we created ESPs, it was a tool that made us feel more comfortable. And why did it make us feel more comfortable? It made us feel more comfortable because we could see the design, we could see the materials, we could see the buffers, we could see, oh, there's an additional greenway in the project. And that was something that we felt comfortable with as a commission. I feel like it was something that the community felt comfortable with. And I think it forces developers to look at projects and build them better. And, I mean, you could build a seven-story building in a whole box, kind of like, I don't even want to use the bad example that I see every morning driving in from I-65 and 40, and I see a big box, and it's the ugliest building in Nashville. I hope that's not one of our friends, whoever developed that, but I just, I think that that tool even makes more sense. I mean, I, I voted for it last time because of those reasons, because it's a better project, because of the green space, because of the materials used. Yeah, you should get some more height. And I think looking at those projects individually forces the architect and the developer to say, man, what could we impress the commission with to get it passed at that particular location? And it's a case-by-case scenario, as the Vice Chair pointed out, and I think that's an important thing to note in this particular case, too. So, is there a motion? We're still in discussion. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
For approval? That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Henley seconds it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. One, six ayes, one no. It's adopted. All right, so we are, it's only 5:15, so I think we, Commissioners, we should, let's keep going. Okay, yep, want to make sure. So we are on to Item 13.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Clifton? Yes, sir?
People are leaving. I just don't think I can stand to wait any longer, but is Leah really Leah? Or was it not named after Luke Lee? I just, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner.
Out of order.
Luke, you're out of order.
But I mean, both sides said it, so.
It's a good point, though. Jason, go ahead.
We're ready.
Okay, this is item 13. It's a zone change request for property located on Ashland City Highway. It's a rezon from multifamily to single-family. Property is outlined in red and is in approximately three and a half acres in size. It's just east of the Ashland City Highway and Briarly Parkway interchange. Staff recommends disapproval. The existing zoning is multifamily and does not permit short-term rentals. It would allow for up to 30 units. Proposed zoning a single-family would allow up to a maximum of nine units. This is an Aboardo-Whites Creek-Haines-Trenity Community Plan. The policy is suburban neighborhood evolving, is intended to create enhanced suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improve pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity with moderate density development patterns. Staff finds that the existing zoning is appropriate, given the location along a busy arterial, close proximity to a major interchange, multifamily is more appropriate than single-family. It's also consistent with the adjacent zoning district to the east. It's also important to note that this, that the existing zoning was approved by the commission and council last year. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, sir. And so we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Oh, you're not the applicant, okay. Really, the council, is the council member the applicant?
Councilmember Hall is the applicant. I'm not certain if he spoke at the beginning. I'm not sure if he stayed.
He did. Okay. So Councilman Hall is the applicant on this particular project. He spoke earlier, and so now anyone wishing to speak in support of the zone change? Seeing none, anyone in opposition? Come on up, sir. Thanks for coming. And just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jerome Wilkinson. I'm on the property on Ashland City Highway. I want this committee to know that I did not request this rezoning, nor that I have anyone on my behalf to request this rezoning, and I do not want the rezoning to be rezoned to RS-15. I'm offended that I have to be here today to vote, to ask for the commission to vote against this rezoning. I don't see it as necessary or justified. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in opposition? There's no rebuttal, no councilmen, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
Seems very straightforward. Staff's analysis is correct. The landowners' opposition is very compelling, so I'll support staff's recommendation of disapproval.
Commissioner Clifton?
I agree.
Commissioner Henley?
Same.
Councilman?
I support staff recommendation. Thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I have one just qualifying question to the staff. I think one of the condition when this parcel was changed, John, a year ago, it was access to the next parcel was one of the condition. If this condition still applies?
That would have been a condition of the previous rezoning, so that would not change.
Thank you. With that, I do support staff recommendation.
Vice Chair, you're the last. Motion?
I, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for disapproval.
That's a proper motion. And second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye. Oppose, no. Eyes have it, it's disapproved. We are on to.
Chairman, if I may, it's my understanding that the next item, number 14, that the question that the individual had has been answered, so if you would be open to seeking if there's still opposition to 14, that might be an appropriate way.
Thank you, Director. So is anyone in the audience here to oppose item number 14, which is 2022Z094PR001? It's 842 Cherokee Avenue? Anybody? All right, so Commissioners, it would be, when that happens, we have generally put it back on the consent. Is there a motion to put item number 14 on the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's a proper motion. And second, any other discussion to put it back, item 14 on consent? Approve it on consent? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Item 14 is approved and back on the consent agenda. So that takes us to item number 17. All right, 17. Jared?
Good evening. I'm Jared Issless with the Planning Commission. I work in the design studio. And tonight, I'll be presenting item 17 on the agenda, which is Fourth and Lee. This request is an overall height modification within the Lafayette sub-district of the downtown code. It's to allow 24-story residential building where eight are permitted by right and 11 are permitted through bonus height. The project includes 525 residential units, almost 19,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, a 1,400-square-foot publicly accessible pocket park, and 276 underground parking This slide shows a ground floor plan for the project site. Fourth Avenue is on the bottom of the screen. You'll see pedestrian entrances to the tower's residential lobby and various retail spaces located on each of its three street frontages, Fourth Avenue South, Leah Avenue, and Almond Street. The building's entirely underground parking is accessed from the alley, which is located on the north side of the property. And this is also where service and loading will occur, from the alley. The overall height modification process replaced the special exception variance process in 2015. Since that time, requests for additional height in downtown have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. As recently as this past fall of 2021, the downtown code was amended to further clarify overall height modification criteria. The OHM process requires three prior steps before a hearing at the Planning Commission, all of which have already been completed by the applicant. First, the executive director made a determination that reasonable efforts have been made to utilize all available bonus height program options. Next, the applicant held a community meeting and sent notices to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. There were no members of the public who attended the meeting. And lastly, the applicant brought the project to the MDHA Design Review Committee, where they voted in favor, with none opposed, to approve the concept design, proposed DTC modifications, and to recommend approval of Fourth and Lee's overall height modification. The downtown code states that the Planning Commission may grant additional height for exceptional design, including but not limited to: unique architecture, exceptionally strong streetscape, contribution to the skyline, improvement of the project's relationship to surrounding properties, improvement to the character of the neighborhood, and implementation of significant community improvements, such as open space, public infrastructure, or others determined by Metro. The following slides dive into how this project exhibits these exceptional design qualities. This is a perspective of the proposed building looking north on Fourth Avenue towards downtown. You'll see that the building's masonry base is reminiscent of older industrial buildings and creates a human scale at the street level, while the building's tower floats above the base with a modulated facade that is broken down horizontally and vertically, which creates a subtle woven pattern in the overall facade. The cladding is a combination of glass panels and rust-colored metal panels. The unique architecture creates visual interest in the skyline from any viewpoint. This is a view of Fourth Avenue South at the street level. Currently, Fourth Avenue is characterized by fast-moving vehicular traffic and is a gateway into the neighborhood and out of downtown. As such, the project's frontage on Fourth Avenue is of great importance. The active retail uses and residential lobby on the ground floor of the building and the pedestrian scale of the architecture encourage walkability in the neighborhood. The project has proposed several infrastructure improvements as part of the overall height modification request. First, the project will dedicate right-of-way for the alignment of Almond Street, which you can see here at the top of the screen, on their east property line. Additionally, the project will provide various pedestrian crosswalk improvements and a contribution to the design and construction of a planned bikeway on Linsley Avenue. With the realignment of Almond, new sidewalks and pedestrian activity will dynamically activate retail spaces, outdoor seating areas, and a publicly accessible dog park on the east side of the building. So these views show Almond Street and how they're activated. And lastly, the proposed building has earned much of its additional height through the lead underground parking, public parking, impervious surface bonus height program options, which are outlined in the downtown code. In summary, Fourth and Lee exhibits many qualities that contribute to its exceptional design, and staff recommends approval with the following conditions and deferral without all conditions. These first five conditions are typical for OHM projects, and then the sixth and seventh conditions are unique to this project. They are that prior to final site plan approval, details of the Almond Street frontage shall be refined and reviewed by planning staff, and that prior to final site plan approval, the project shall be reviewed and receive final approval from the MDHA Design Review Committee. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jared. Was that your first time presenting? Excellent work. We have excellent staff. I can't say it enough, so thank you. Great job. All right, so we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Welcome. How are you? Good to see you.
Two.
You have 10 minutes. Give it save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Turn your, you got it, yep. There you go. You start over.
I'm sorry, I must have turned it off when I thought I was turning it on. I'm Catherine Withers with Barge Design Solutions, 615 Third Avenue South, representing Douglas Development in this overall height modification at Fourth and Lee, Leah. It is Stewart, it is Commissioner Clifton, it is a question, Lee or Leah?
There's a question.
It is. Well, our design team began interacting with planning department staff over three years ago now. We took a little break for COVID. At that time, it was just one parcel on the corner of Fourth and Lee. Now it's grown to the three that are in front of you, so it's about three-quarters of an acre. So that opened up additional design opportunities. At the same time, big changes were happening in the neighborhood and across the city. The developer also had the desire that this project would propose active and unique architecture. That was a departure from the flatness of recent additions to the Nashville skyline. So our team quickly came to understand that this site has three street frontages, not just two, Fourth and Lee, you heard about Almond Street. But today, Almond Street is a crumbling and ill-defined alley with a very strange offset. So in making this a functional street, it required more dedication of right-of-way than is typical, but it also opened up the opportunity for ground-level public space, which is that dog park that Jared mentioned. Also, neighborhood-oriented retail facing Almond and outdoor seating that's available to the larger neighborhood. I know as a neighborhood, I'm looking, neighborhood resident, I mean, office resident, looking forward to eating lunch there. But, and as staff noted, there is the masonry base that creates that human scale that is reminiscent of the older industrial buildings that used to make up this sub-district, Lafayette Sub-District. So as noted, there are three active facades with wide tree-lined sidewalks, and then the sculptural tower that floats above the base. So the tower is in, it modulates in two-story increments, and with the ins and outs, it makes it so that when you're inside each of those units, it feels like you're in a corner unit. So no inside units. So this, and also with the public space of the dog park, there are green spaces for the residents on top of that base and at the top of the tower. So this is primarily a residential building to continue growing downtown into that complete community where you can live, work, and play all in the same place. So as many of you know, I was around during the creation of the downtown community plan and the downtown code. And this reasoning for the Lafayette Sub-District being at 11 stories was to focus the intensity of development on Sobro and the core, and to not turn up the pressure on the Lafayette Sub-District where those light industrial and service users were at that time. Well, I think you've been successful in focusing development on the core and Sobro, but unfortunately, those service users have left the Lafayette Sub-District. So many of those smaller buildings are sitting vacant, waiting to be redeveloped. So many of the reasons for that 11-story cap are not there anymore. So this, Fourth Avenue is also a gateway out of downtown. So perhaps a slight transitional step down would still be, from Sobro is still relevant as you're leaving downtown, and the 24-story building meets that intention. So with Douglas Development's desire for this building to be exceptional and continuous dialogue with the planning staff throughout the process, we're pleased that this version before you is exceptional in terms of architecture, streetscape, contribution to the skyline, and improvement of the neighborhood. Our design team believes that this building truly creates a unique sculptural addition to the skyline while being contextually appropriate. This building sets the tone for what this stretch of Fourth Avenue should be, and it reflects culturally creative environment that Nashville is. So we appreciate staff's recommendation of support, and we respectfully ask for your vote of approval. Our team is here if you have questions, and I think Doug is going to add some comments.
Thank you. Doug Sloan, 6354 Torrington Road. I want to speak to the overall height modification process just for a moment and the DTC. DTC was born about 10 years ago now, and a lot has changed in Nashville over those 10 years, and downtown more dramatically than anywhere else in town. The only residents that we had in town, downtown, when the DTC was created, were those that had flats on Second Avenue. There wasn't hardly any other residents in downtown. And now we have an abundance and a growing number, and that's fantastic. That's one of the biggest goals of the DTC, was to encourage people to move downtown, to try and limit the sprawl that we saw coming. And that was going on at the time. We had a lot of subdivisions in Antioch and in our suburbs that were chopping up some of, a lot of properties and creating these tract, single-family homes. So the idea was create a zoning code that encouraged growth downtown, encouraged density downtown. But we were limited at the time. We didn't have the ability to also create impact fees to solve a lot of our infrastructure problems that we had. The state has taken that from Davidson County. And so we tried to come up with other levers. Later, not in 2012, but later on, we came up with the overall height modification as one of those levers, as one of those tools that we could use to try and gain some of the things that the city needs, despite the state's efforts to keep us from doing that. I cannot applaud the department enough for how imaginative they've been in using that to get the infrastructure that this city needs downtown. The parks that you saw and that last, the last president. The parks that you saw in that last, the last presentation for overall height, I guess it was an SP, sorry, and the one across the street, that parkland, that's the kind of land that the DTC called for in the Sobro District, and it called for in the Gulch. We didn't get it in the Gulch. It all grew faster than we could attain that. We couldn't demand money, exact any sort of contribution from development in the Gulch to put, to buy green, to buy land to build parks in the Gulch, because we didn't have that lever. That was taken from us. The overall height modification process has been very unique in that it has handed you that tool. I can't encourage you enough to continue to use it. It was used in this, in this process, I thought this project was dead, frankly, about halfway through, because the staff demanded that all of the parking go below grade, to create a more active streetscape, to create usable space, not just on the first floor, but several floors above that. I thought that killed it. It did not. I thought that the demands on giving over land on Almond Street was also a major problem, but it was not. This, this project survived all of that. You wouldn't have this architecture, you wouldn't have the streetscape that you see right here on Almond, on Almond Alley, but it's a street, it's called a street, but none of this would look the way that it does if you didn't have that leverage. And so I applaud the department and the staff and Jared and everyone that was involved in demanding those for the city. I think it's a much better project because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And...
We deserve the rest of our time, please.
One minute and 30 seconds. Lisa, let's make note for the rebuttal. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Someone make sure. Anyone wishing, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Steve Snyder. I live at Twining Rutledge in the City Lights condominium building. It's, the overall modification of standards is ridiculous. It's completely broken. Unless the city and metro were prescient enough in coming up with a comprehensive plan to anticipate these block-by-block, parcel-by-parcel increased densities, there's no capacity from an infrastructure standpoint. Everything is obsolete from an infrastructure standpoint, and to continue to add more and more, in this particular case, over two times the amount that's authorized, in spite of the fact that it's been suggested that the height limits were obsolete, those are the height limits. They were adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan in any functioning, fully functioning planning process looks at everything, not just uses, but the infrastructure that supports it. It's time to stop. It's time to look at a modification and an update of the plan, because your legacy, Mr. Chairman, is going to be that horrible building that you see coming up 65 that looks like it was drawn by a junior high student as a result of a competition. You're also going to have a legacy of buildings like the Black Box Building that is a, the efficiency apartments that are being built in this neighborhood. You need an architectural review board. You need an architectural standards. You need a design review commission that looks at everything. Don't just count on people coming in and asking to modify standards so you can provide input to the design. You're losing out on the one opportunity. I've heard the executive director say KVB was a missed opportunity. You're allowing this to be another missed opportunity. Take the time, do it right, function as a planning commission, and stop functioning as a reacting commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, huh? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, one minute and 30 seconds. We'll buzz you.
Thank you. You do have, you have a design review committee. You already have a committee with architects on it that review these projects and that look at it, your staff as well. It's one of the things that, one of the reasons that I would suggest that it should stay, the authorities should stay here. Frankly, this body and this staff is the right group to review projects for, for great architecture, to improve the streetscape, to add to the infrastructure that's failing. This is the right group. Do not, and I beg the council member, do not put this in the hands of the 40-member council. That is not their expertise. That is the expertise of this department and of this body. And you have a design review committee that will look at it to see if it meets the criteria for that neighborhood, and I think they're doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you. And the council member is not here. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Clifton, do you want to go first? We always try to spread it around.
That's very commendable, but I really don't have anything to, to say about it. I, I believe, I was persuaded by the presentation that it is a step forward and a very carefully thought-through step forward, and I'm supportive of it.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yeah, I would say I, I do like the, the theme that I'm seeing of, you know, creating the opportunity for, for our planning department to, to influence projects, and what I would say is probably one of the most critical transition points in, in our city. I think, again, allowing, you know, the thoughts of public infrastructure and, as well as pedestrian-friendly interaction is really important. I did like the idea of having, you know, the concept of, of no interior spaces. It kind of also creates somewhat like a floating lantern type of, of appeal to me as I look at it. But I also think it's, it's really interesting to, at least as I interpret it, to show that you have three facades of a building that, you know, kind of create a continuity of pedestrian activity. I think that's something, again, having, having walked this part of downtown, you know, it is absent there now. You don't have a comfort level at the, at a pedestrian experience. And so as we continue to work in this direction away from downtown, I do think we have a planning staff that's, that has that in mind, and I like seeing that.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the presentation team. I've really learned a lot from the presentation, especially appreciate the background about the downtown code area and how that was developed. I think Ms. Withers is right that, that area has changed quite a bit, especially along the Fayette. When, today, when you go down Fourth Avenue towards Lafayette and toward the interstate, what I see a lot of has been built along the Lafayette area, Lafayette intersection in particular, are very large self-storage buildings, right? So there are a lot of very boxy buildings that, they may have a veneer on them, but they're hardly activated in, in any way, even if they do have, you know, decent materials that they're made out of. A lot of times, I think folks would, would comment as well that, from a landscaping perspective, they're not great. I mean, it just becomes a big monolith for, that really sort of impedes connectivity into the neighborhood further south. So I think this does a really, a really good job of, of activating the street. One of the things that I'm most interested about this one is the Almond Street piece. I remember saying to friends several years ago that, you know, who would have thought that at Third and Almond that we would start to have a canyon, you know, as new things were built around behind the Hampton Inn, right? Like, who would have thought that Almond Street would have all these kind of buildings that are lining it further out? And I think this really continues that in a neat way, further south. I like the realignment of the, of the street there to make it a functional street. Really like the open space. I'm a cat person, but I do empathize with my dog friends that they need to let those animals out sometimes. But I think that's a nice way of activating that space, and hopefully with Almond Street being pretty narrow, it'll still be a comfortable space for, for folks and their pets, even though it looks like it would be protected from the street a little bit. But I can see how it'd be a little overwhelming to have all the traffic going down Fourth, and especially with folks trying to make the light. So I think that's really great to activate and align Almond Street in that way. Really like the fact that it's no short-term rentals. I think that's a good thing to have, as, as I see in the staff report. We have a lot of folks that comment about parking spaces. It looks like this, if I'm reading the staff report correctly, a little over 500 residential units plus some commercial with about 275 parking spaces, so not even a one-for-one ratio for one parking space per unit. So I think that's at least moving in a direction that a lot of people would like to see for reducing parking inventory in town. From an infrastructure perspective, again, I want to give another plug to Connect Downtown. The NDOT is working with stakeholders in the downtown area to find ways to help people get around a little bit better than everyone relying on a car. So we don't have all of those answers today, but we're working on it as a city and look forward to seeing what those recommendations are. So I am very impressed by the presentation and I support the staff recommendation. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the former planning department staff for the interesting history, the reason behind why we have height limit on the each subsection, and how DTC, a height modification was born. And I think, you know, I think we touched, should we just expand and rebuild that, you know, height? But if we do that, you know, we always have risk of having not interesting concrete box type of building coming in each section. So for that, I think having this DTC height modification is a great tool, so we can literally, you know, gauge and parcel-by-parcel, design-by-design. And for that, I really appreciate our staff. They pushed really good, and this particular design meet overall height modification. You know, it meets a unique architecture, exceptional street escape, contribution to skyline, relation to surrounding neighbors, and improvement to, thereafter, the neighborhood. So I think what I really appreciate about not only the design, but exceptional dedication of right-of-way. So that will really activate, and also it is really a complement to the project we already approved. So instead of going to unlimited height and then, you know, we increase the height and then all of a sudden become a seven-to-eight street. So that will be abrupt. So that will give really nice skyline, really cohesive a design. So for that, I am all for this project, and I think it's meet all the criteria, and I really appreciate designing team and especially our staff pushing really needed the community amenity. So I'm in support.
Vice Chair?
I think I'm in support of what a lot of my fellow commissioners have said. I am sensitive to what the commenter said. I, I mean, I don't think this needs to be an either-or. I mean, it shouldn't have to be, it's either we approve things with a height modification or we get the box that we don't like off 65. There should be a way for us to have, you know, there may be some things that we haven't done, that we can think about in the future that will help us with achieving better design standards with by-right developments. You know, I don't, that's not something we've really done in the past, unless it's in an urban design overlay area. So there may be things like that that we can, other options, so it's not just a, whoa, one or the other situation. I don't know, Director, if you have a...
Sure, I'd love to speak to that. So the, the build, the mysterious building we're referring to was a by-right project, so it means it did not have a height modification, it did not go through a design review. Since that time, this body recommended an update to the downtown code that includes material standards, that includes standards around glazing, and that includes a required design review for all projects, by-right, bonus, or height modification, so we can have that scrutiny. And so I, that project would not be approved today under the current standards. So I do think we've taken some really important steps towards ensuring that the basic design quality is met. Can you pull up the height, the conditions? Thank you. There are some, some aspects that we require in the height modification that are way above and beyond what I think we could accomplish under even the more basic improved standards. And so these are things like investing in infrastructure as needed, requiring the overhead lines be buried, requiring that the parking be completely buried underground. We force that issue very aggressively, because if we want a pedestrian-oriented downtown, having open ground floor and second floor spaces that are used for retail or other active uses is really important. And so having just floated new standards for grounding parking as part of a basic requirement, I don't think we're there as a city yet, but we can require that as part of a height modification process, and anybody doing business here knows that that's something that I'll put on the table. And so there are, I agree very much with Commissioner Johnson's assessment that while site-by-site development isn't typical for how we might do our work in the city, it has enabled us to really look at what's needed on a project-by-project basis, which is necessary for downtown. I will conclude by saying, you know, as the downtown partnership said to us in one of our work sessions, we need about 40,000 residential or new population in downtown to really meet sort of the goal standard for active downtowns, a healthy downtown. We're just not there yet. We're about half that. And so requiring that there be no STRs, for example, that all of these have to be units for residents is, is a crucial step towards that. I don't think I could ask for that under a basic zoning, ask for that limitation, but we put it on the table for height modifications. And so all that to say, it is a good tool, and even though I think we're continually, continually working towards upgrading the basic standards, there is a certain point at which you have to be mindful and really only put conditions on the table when they're going above and beyond in terms of their request. They have to go above and beyond in terms of the execution.
I think that all makes sense and is really helpful, and I, you know, I think this project is actually, is a really good example of, you know, had we had some of the mechanisms in place that the commenter was, was speaking to, it feels like you came out with the best possible project that you could here. I mean, and you achieved all those things. So I, I certainly am in support of it. I am sensitive to, you know, the desire for people to know, have some predictability in terms of how, you know, again, I mean, exactly what I said at the last item, we're at 24 now here, and it makes sense. But maybe that, I, I don't know how we, I mean, as you said, we're looking at some tiering. I think having some standards over when we choose 24 versus 29 versus 36 will be helpful.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Haynes?
So I agree with all of your comments, but I still can't vote for this. I think we're getting closer. Instead of six or seven times by right, this is three times by right. I think this is a much better project. I think this workshop and the work before this body to come up with these tiering standards is really important. And I think had Mr. Sloan really given the proper history, and we had a workshop on this, and we looked at the overall height modification process, we were approving two floors and three floors and four floors and five floors. We weren't doing two and three and four and five and six and seven times by right height. And you can achieve that. We studied many projects that achieved really good pedestrian zones, dedication of right-of-way, fantastic green space contributions on projects that got two and three and four stories and not two and three and four times. So this commission has a lot of work to do the next few months with the staff, who do a fabulous job. This project is far better than it could have been six months ago, far better than it was two years ago. But I think it's, I think we still have work to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes, and I know that we've worked, I love the spirited debate, and, you know, reasonable minds can reasonably differ. A real smart person told me that a long time ago, and we may not always agree, but I know that this commission is completely compassionate for the city, doing the right thing, and will continue to do that. And it's a little uncomfortable sometimes when you get those types of height modifications, but it depends on the project and how it looks and how it feels and what the developer brings to the table for the, the height. So very good discussion, I appreciate from everyone, including the audience, and I, I really appreciate all your, all your comments. It helps us learn your perspective, and I think that that's important. We do take it very, very seriously, as you know. We'll have another workshop, and, you know, we, we, and those are actually open to the public as well. And so many of you out there in the audience come to those, and we all learn together. So thank you, but we are ready for a motion. Anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Hanley?
Move to accept staff's recommendation, all conditions.
To approve? Okay. It's a proper motion. Second, any other discussion? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes, six, one, no. All right, Commissioners, so we've been here two hours, generally about two hours. We like to take a break. So how about we take about a 10, 10 minute, 10 minute break? We'll come back. Second free job. Sir, we're going to give you a raise, but nothing of nothing is nothing. All right. So we do have a clarification though on, under H, other business. So Commissioners, if it's, I'm going to have Lisa explain it. And so is there objection to going back and considering the clarification on item number 25? Is there, seeing no objection? Lisa will explain what happened and then we'll, we'll have to vote on it again.
Certainly. So in, at your seat in front of you, I've placed two memos for certificates, certification of bonus height compliance. When I read off the agenda and when we printed it, only one of the addresses was included, but there are two separate projects that we are ready for you all to adopt the certification of bonus height. I've included both of those in front of you and those are for two different projects, the Madera Sobro and 1010 Church Street. And so we just need you to go back and re-adopt that item with both of those address, with both of those projects.
So is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it and both addresses will be on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we are back onto the regular agenda and we are on item number 20. We're ready for the presentation.
This is item 20. It's for Green Lane Cluster Lot Subdivision. It's permit 22 single family lots and one duplex lot. The approximately 12 acre site is consisted of several parcels and is located on the south side of Green Lane between Knight Drive and White's Creek Pike. The site is relatively flat and does not contain any known environmentally constraining, environmental constraints. Bryley Parkway is to the south, that's UPS on the opposite side of Bryley. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The site is zoned for one and two family residential with the traditional subdivision. R10 would permit up to 52 lots. 13 lots would be duplex eligible. Under the cluster lot option, R10 would permit up to 44 lots. 11 of those lots would be duplex eligible. Do keep in mind that this is not a zone change and that this is proposed under the existing development rights. The site is in a rural maintenance policy area and subdivision must adhere to the rural subdivision regulations in additional to, in addition to the all zoning code requirements. This is for concept plan, which is the first phase of a three step process. I think I skipped a slide.
No, you didn't.
So this is the first phase of a three step process. This would be the concept, the next one would be the final site plan, and the next would be final plat, which would create the lots. This is the proposed plan. It utilizes the open alternative section of the rural regulations. It calls for 21 single family lots and one duplex lot. Lot five is a duplex lot and is represented with the asterix. Lots range in size from six, a little over 6,000 square feet to about 60,000 square feet. Lots one through five front Green Lane and lots six through 22 front a new public street. Sidewalks and street trees are provided along Green Lane and the new public street. A Class C landscape buffer yard is located along the perimeter of the site and the plan includes a recreational trail. I don't know what happened to my slide. The site does not contain any areas required to be set aside for conservation. As detailed in the staff report, the plan is consistent with the requirements of the rural subdivision regulations and the cluster lot option. This includes, but is not limited to, lot comparability along Green Lane, lot size, minimum open space, setbacks and lot depth. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions as the proposed plan is consistent with the zoning code and subdivision requirements.
Thank you, sir. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Come on up. You have 10 minutes. You can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and address. Welcome.
Okay. I keep forgetting to bring the taller mic adapter, so I'll lean over here. Andrew Walters with Catalyst Design Group, 5100 Tennessee Avenue in Nashville. Here representing on behalf of the applicant. Thank you again for your service to this group. I know, long hours. I just wanted to echo and appreciate Councilmember Campbell's support in her talk before the meeting about this project. She did lead, as she mentioned, two really productive community meetings. I know some of the neighbors are here tonight, but just kind of reiterating her reasons for support. As Jason just mentioned, this project is essentially by right in sense the, complies fully with the zoning code requirements and the subdivision regulations for cluster lot subdivisions. And actually in the meetings with, we had with the neighbors, we reduced the density by a couple lots and provided some enhanced improvements at their encouragement and, and supportive with Ms. Campbell. So again, we were very pleased through that process and, and would ask for your support today. We'll reserve a couple minutes. I think the builders like to talk to as well.
Thank you, sir. We'll save two, oh, yep, come on, come on up. Sorry. I misunderstood. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Richard Machen. I live at 8410 Sycamore Creek Road. I am a developer and builder and I'm very, very excited about this project. It's, I bought it, started buying the land five years ago. I know by right I can put as many as 47 lots, I think, and just working with Catalyst Group, we're down to 22 lots. Out of college, I was a licensed horticulturist and I was an arborist and I do appreciate open spaces, green spaces. And North Nashville is a place that I believe that people want to live and it's, it's growing and just excited to be part of, of this development in Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reserve, anyone else from the team? All right. So we'll reserve two minutes for a rebuttal. Then you speak on the individual time. Yep. So anyone wishing to speak in support? All right, come on up.
Not support.
Oh, not support. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, oh, wait a second. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
My name's Ricky Hemmon. I own the property at 443, which is adjoining what they're wanting to do here. From all the talks before, mine's just the opposite. I'm trying to figure out how a thousand houses in one mile stretch is good for the community. I don't want 22 houses and four lots beside me and that's what they're wanting to do. But in addition to that, on Greens Lane, which is one mile, they are putting 500 houses now that y'all have already approved. And they're also putting 500 houses at the end of Greens, which is a thousand houses and an average of 2,000, I mean, two cars per family, you're talking about, you know, 1,500, 2,000 cars. And the traffic is already now backed up on Greens Lane. There is a subdivision across from this area that they're wanting to do this. It's high crime. There's gunshots three or four nights a week. There's all kind of problems in that area and I'm afraid all of this is going to explode to all of Greens Lane. It's just not a good idea and nobody has thought about the traffic. The council lady earlier said, you know, that, I don't, I don't remember if she said that there was a study or not, but you don't, just using a little common sense, when you take that many people, it's going to destroy the traffic through there and it's just a two lane road and there's no way to, to route traffic any other way. You know, this was a rural area and again, I'm kind of sentimental to it, but it just shouldn't be doing.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up. Welcome.
This is intense. I'm Bobby Hemmon. I live at 443 Green Lane, in the house that my grandfather built for my dad in the 40s. I live in the country for a reason. I like the deer and the turkeys and in my backyard and I don't necessarily want 22 houses 20 feet from my house to invade my privacy, the pollution, the noise, the obstruction of the view, and also the, the crime and the traffic that it'll bring. So I'm highly against it.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else? Come on up.
I'd just like to add to that, Chairman.
Welcome.
If we can go back to the Nashville Next Plan and overlay a map of that, and can we go back two slides to give you a broader view of that rather than just zooming into the plot? It would give you a better idea where we're situated in between UPS as well as FedEx. So we also have a lot of FedEx trucks coming down Green Lane as well as there's a school directly across the street. Every day around 3:30, cars back up. You can't get through there. Right now they're laying power lines all down the road, so they're closing the road as we go. The traffic is going to be a huge deal and no one's taking that into account and how close those houses will be situated to Bryley. On the other side of UPS, there's also Rogers. So every day at 3:30, we have blasting. If I was going to buy a home for 550,000, I wouldn't want blasting every day. So I'd like the blasting addressed, or addressed rather than traffic. And to what he spoke to, the crime, if you look at Hip White's Creek, not saying that it would bring crime, but it would be a magnet for it. And we've, every week we have a report, somebody's getting their port swing stolen. I found nine millimeter shells in my yard, that kind of thing. If people were to rob one of those houses, they're running through our yard at this point and that's kind of what makes me nervous because I've encountered people that go into the driveway, does Ms. Jones live here? Well, there's never been a Ms. Jones here. It's been the Hemmons since the 40s. So that's where I'm coming from. I'd just like that to be addressed because this is the fourth meeting I've been to and no one has heard me. So that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And for the record, please state your name and, name and address.
Donald Spencer Greenly. Sorry.
Thank you.
43.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two minute rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention just a couple things I probably should have mentioned earlier. We did have a traffic study that was done, even though this doesn't have the density that would typically be seen to require one, but there's a traffic study I believe that's been done and NDOT's reviewing that and obviously will comply with those recommendations. So I wouldn't expect a major amount of improvements for something like this, but not sure about the other developments that the gentleman was speaking to. I'm sure for something that size, that would obviously have a large scale traffic study performed. And then the other, young lady mentioned that the home, I guess her home is right near the, the large lot. If you go back to the, Jason, if you don't mind flipping back to the concept plan there, the longest, deepest lot I believe is, is the adjoining lot to her. And we did that on purpose to try to give a deep lot subdivision so she didn't have multiple neighbors next to that home lot. So just wanted to mention that. Again, thank you.
Thank you. And the council members already spoke and so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Johnson, you want to go?
Thank you, Chair. It is a hard, you know, especially when you see the open land turning into multiple parcels. So, but Lisa, could you tell me this is a T2 maintenance? But it does have sewer line already connected, correct?
Yes, that's correct. There is sewer available along Green Lane and it is a T2 rural maintenance policy. The zoning that's implied, the zoning that's on the property is R10, which was the zoning when the rural policy was applied to the property.
Thank you. So it seems like, you know, if we have a T2 neighborhood evolving, which we don't, but it seems like, you know, a T2 rural area, some area already has sewer, so moderate density might be appropriate and especially, you know, sewer line and so forth. I think this plan, especially the first front lot has deeper setback, so and is, and also couple of those lot, I think it has existing house. So that is already closer to the street. So it's not really changing the appearance as far as a front facing Green Street. And also I think Nashville Tree Conservation Corp, they do really good analysis and I think they did work really well with this group. So with their help, it has really nice buffer. And so I think the first it was proposed, the plan became much better and better. And it comes up with better compromise concerning, you know, larger area. And if I see this in a really residential, not residential, like agricultural area, and I would feel it would be inappropriate. But however, I understand there's more density, but you know, Nashville needs house and that across from the street has similar pattern of housing type and size of the lot. So for that reason, looking at larger picture and looking at sub leg and looking at buffer and larger size facing Green Street, seems like this placement meets subdivision regulation element and the placement of the new houses, smaller one in the back, but with adequate buffer. So I cannot find any reason it is not meeting subdivision regulation. So for that reason, I think that analysis is right on.
Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the neighbors that came out and spoke. This is one of those streets that I remember from several years ago, but hadn't been down in a while. And so took a, took a spin out that way recently and was, was also pretty surprised to see how much had, has, is bringing up along that area. It is a narrow road. Did notice the utility work that was referenced in the comments as well as the, the school that's across the street. So it's definitely a busy street. I do feel that this is appropriate infill at this location, especially sort of in this buffer, sort of providing, I think, a better buffer against, next to Bryley Parkway. It does kind of sensitively have the density closer to Bryley Parkway itself and then gets a little bit more into the more typical lot pattern the closer you get to Green Lane. So I think that's pretty well done. I also appreciated the commentary from Nashville Tree Conservation Corps that looked at it from some of those standpoints. Definitely adding sidewalks is a, is a big help to the street. I know it won't go down the whole street, but it's, it is something that would be needed and I think probably even would be beneficial for the school and things like that. So I, I do feel like this is an appropriate location for, for this density. I think the, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. That, that particular area does have a lot going on and I think that just realistically that's going to continue, particularly right there along Bryley and between some of the large employment areas. That's, that is a better place to have density than further out in the more traditionally rural areas within the, the T2 policy area. So I appreciate the council member working with the applicant and with some of the community groups to at least mitigate some of the concerns as best as, as I think that we can get for this site plan. And so I'm inclined to support the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to recognize the neighbors that came and spoke. I understand it is a definite transition in what I guess can be considered a way of life and particularly to properties immediately adjacent. It does sound like it's an area that's getting a lot of intense utilization and then now also having, you know, the amount of, the amount of residential sprouting up there. It does seem like an area of focus for, for our city to look at with industrial use, school, and then now this heavy residential use. Particular, particular to this project, I do think that some of the design elements do respect, I think, what the, what the desire of the community would be, particularly
I think, what the desire of the community would be, particularly from the street frontage standpoint. I too agree that I think the efforts that were put in place to look at the site, particularly from the trees and the canopy that's there and the species that's there, I think that's commendable. I think it's a standard that I wish other developers would do, even when it's not required. It sounds like the same was done for a traffic study that, to my knowledge, I don't think is required for this, for this site.
That's correct. The threshold is typically 75 lots, which would trigger a traffic study.
So I mentioned that just because I wanted, I wanted to, you know, highlight the fact that it seems like there was a very thoughtful effort that went into the development of this site plan. I definitely agree that there's a need for housing. And I think the way that it was done, the scale that it was done, and the considerations that were made for the surroundings were very well done. So I support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifton?
I certainly know to some degree, even though I live in an area that has been pretty fully developed for a long, long time, I know from lots of experience with other folks in town that it's a huge surprise to know that something so much larger than they expected or were used to can come into a spot and change what they see and how they understand, change what they understood about where they were living in terms of rural versus semi-urban and all of this. I understand that. I suspect most all of us can identify with that. If not, in terms of rezoning in Nashville, just surprised at how things are growing up and that we didn't expect. So I fully appreciate the folks who've come out raising questions about this. And, but everything else that has been said about the care that the developer seems to have taken with this is certainly true and much, much better than many people, many, many things that come before us. Much better approach than we've seen sometimes. So I'm supportive of it. I think the staff is correct, and I think my fellow commissioners have said it all very well.
Commissioner Haines?
So it looks like we could have a maximum of 52 lots in a non-cluster lot subdivision. We could have 44 lots under the cluster lot, and they're building 22. And I think this plan is a far better plan than they could have built. It offers green spaces, offers preservation of trees. I agree with all my commissioners, so I'll support staff's recommendation.
Vice Chair?
I agree. Having seen other proposals for the cluster lots out in the same area, this is much more sensitive to the surrounding context. And I particularly appreciated what the applicant said about thinking about what, how to sort of align the properties with the adjacent property owner. So I appreciate their sensitivity to this. You know, just kind of scanning down Green Lane, it does appear that there is a lot of development going on. And I guess I just wonder, you know, do we think about the possibility of right-of-way on the front of these properties to accommodate another lane of traffic down the road? I mean, if this entire street is getting redeveloped and you've got a school, FedEx, and UPS going up and down that street, you know, that really is, that does seem like a concern. And it seems like there is a lot of development happening here. So I guess I wonder, do we have some thought to trying to get the right-of-way down, you know? Sure. I mean, we're happy to refer that question to NDOT and request that they evaluate the right-of-way needs and whether we could acquire those or get set asides as part of development. I know it's been something of a mixed bag in this area. We did recommend disapproval of an SP that ultimately went forward several years ago. This zoning here is pretty intense zoning. And so the commission, you know, is subdividing, is approving a subdivision, not a rezoning. But I think, given that the zoning is intense and some of the employment uses you mentioned, we're happy to refer that to NDOT. Lisa, and I think we could include that. I'm not sure we need it as a condition, but we can certainly send them a formal correspondence to that effect.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I mean, it does seem like there's a lot of development here and a lot of land that could be more developed and more in, you know, intense usage. So kind of as we always talk about, the need to be ahead of our infrastructure, multiple projects going in will make it harder to get that land back down the road.
I agree.
Well, Vice Chair, you know, Director, I feel more comfortable myself when we put, you know, part of it would be a request and put it in the condition to ask them to analyze if we need another lane. I think, I think we should do that. If you're comfortable with that, Vice Chair, you can make that part of your motion.
I can make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation, but add the condition that we follow up with a formal request to NDOT to evaluate the capacity of Green Lane considering the intensity of usage.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion?
On seeing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, ayes have it. And we are, it's approved. We are now on item number 22. All right, Abby, you're up. When you're ready, we're ready. But before we start, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. For the purpose of the quorum, I will stay. But this project is literally in my neighborhood. So to be abundantly clear and with a conflict of interest and ethics conduct, I would recuse myself from the discussion.
All right, and we'll mention that at the end. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. Go ahead, Abby.
All right. Sorry, let me scoot a little closer. Item number 22 is the Westmead, Inc. Plat Amendment. This is a, I guess, before I start, I would like to be clear that this request is for a plat amendment to amend the front setbacks. It is not a request for a new subdivision. No new lots are being created with this request. These lots already exist. So this is a-
Abby, forgive me. For some reason, we're having a little trouble hearing you over here. Would you either get a little closer to the microphone or, but we couldn't?
Is this better?
I'm sorry, I was wrestling around.
Well, there was paper, well, okay, I'm sorry, start over.
It may have been me.
No. Sorry.
Okay, is this better? Can you hear me better now? All right. Item number 22 is the Westmead Park Plat Amendment. And I was just saying that, for the record, I do want to note that the scope of this request is for a plat amendment to amend the setbacks. It is not a request for a new subdivision. These lots already exist, and so no new lots are being created with this request. This is a request to amend a previously approved plat to reduce setbacks on six properties located at 181, 185, 189, 193, 197, and 198, Carnivan Parkway. The properties are zoned RS40 and comprise 12.1 total acres. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site includes six existing lots located on the south side of Carnivan Parkway and wrapping to the west around cul-de-sac, which terminates the street. Each existing lot is vacant, and so there are three lots on the south side of the street that are slightly under an acre. And then the three lots that wrap the cul-de-sac are slightly larger, the largest lot being approximately 4.31 acres. This site has been zoned RS40 since 1987. The existing zoning of RS40 is not proposed to change with this request. So the amendment, the details are on your screen. Again, this is a request to reduce the platted setbacks on six existing lots along Carnivan Parkway. The subject properties were platted as buildable lots within the Westmead Park subdivision with setbacks ranging from 125 to 150 feet. These setbacks are shown in the bold black lines. The amendment proposes to reduce these setbacks to 70 feet, as shown on the screen above. So when we talk about setbacks, there are a couple of different types. Some are zoning required, and then some are platted setbacks. The difference is that zoning required setbacks can be a set standard, or they can be contextual based on the surrounding character per the zoning code requirements. Platted setbacks, on the other hand, when they are provided, are recorded with plats and are treated independent of zoning required setbacks. If a platted setback exceeds a zoning required setback, then the platted setback would govern, and that would be the established setback for that lot. Prior to the adoption of Metro's comprehensive zoning, it was not uncommon for plats to include setbacks, particularly when the subdivision was intended to achieve a specific development pattern. The current zoning code that we have now includes setback requirements and includes provisions for contextual setbacks that are intended to be in keeping with surrounding homes. So nowadays, our current subdivision regulations generally defer to the zoning code requirements for setbacks unless specified by the subdivision regulations in certain instances where setbacks would be identified on the plat. In this case, the request is to amend the platted setbacks. The subject properties were platted as buildable lots in 1962 with multiple other lots spanning several new streets on approximately 98 acres in Section 4 of the Westmead Park subdivision. Lots were platted with building setbacks that vary from street to street and even along individual block faces. The recorded Section 4 plat is included on the screen, and the six lots included in this request are identified with red stars. The western portion of Section 4 is on the top left of the screen, and it's contiguous to the eastern portion on the bottom right. Carnivan Parkway is identified with the bold black line, and it's a continuous street, even though it appears kind of disjointed here because of how the two-sheets are oriented. So Lot 85, which is down here, I don't know if you can see my mouse. It's the lot identified in green. It's actually adjacent to the lot with the green dot on the left portion of the screen so that they actually are parallel to each other. Here is a zoomed-in of the original plat with the six lots. The platted building setbacks on these properties are shown in yellow, in a highlighted yellow. So lots 171, 90, and 80 are identified with 125-foot front setbacks. And then lots 89, 87, and 86 are identified with 150-foot front setbacks. Surrounding properties along the street were platted with similar setbacks. The setbacks on each street are slightly different. For instance, on Chatsworth Place, located to the southeast on the screen, the platted setbacks range from 100 feet to 125 feet. And taking a look at the context and surrounding properties, several lots within the subdivision were previously granted setback amendments and have since developed under the amended setbacks. Along Carnivan Parkway, several adjacent properties that were initially platted with 150-foot front setbacks have since developed with setbacks ranging from 58 feet to 75 feet, consistent with the setback amendments which are granted to these properties in the 1960s and 1980s. Amendments were granted to the four adjacent properties on the north side of Carnivan and then the one adjacent property on the south side of Carnivan. Amendments were also granted to several properties on the street to the south, Chatsworth Place. I think at least four amendments were granted to those properties as well. Amendments were likely granted to avoid developing in areas with steeper slopes and sensitive environmental features, which are generally located away from the road and within the platted setback areas. When staff reviews plat amendment requests to modify setbacks, we always look at the zoning code to make sure that the amended setbacks would not conflict with the zoning required setbacks. In residential areas within an established development pattern such as the site, the zoning required setback becomes contextual based on the setbacks of the nearest surrounding homes. And the intent is that the setbacks would be in keeping with the character of the surrounding development pattern for that particular neighborhood and along that particular street. So if a block face has developed with homes located closer to the street, then the new home would develop with a setback that is in line with those, with the lesser setbacks. But alternatively, if a block face has developed with setbacks that are further from the street, the new home would fall in line with that character. And often, we see platted setbacks that exceed the zoning required setbacks, which is the case here as well. In this case, the closest surrounding homes along Carnivan Parkway have developed with setbacks that generally appear to be in keeping with the 70-foot front setback that's requested by the applicant. The proposed 70-foot front setback will permit future development that is in line with the contextual setbacks along the block face. Here is a view of the adjacent development pattern on the north side of Carnivan Parkway for context. Staff recommends approval of the plat amendment, finding the proposed front setbacks to be in keeping with the contextual setbacks along the street. We would recommend a condition that if the contextual setbacks are determined by Metro codes to be greater than 70 feet, then the contextual setback would apply. Staff would note, again, that these subject lots are existing buildable lots. They are entitled to be developed regardless of the outcome of this request. Again, the case before you tonight is to amend the platted setbacks. It's not a request for a new subdivision. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And so we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Please state your name and address. And you have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here today. My name is Rebecca. I work, I live at 2014 12th Avenue South in Nashville. I'm here with my husband, Drew. We have two dogs, Rondo and Zoe. We've lived here in Nashville for seven years. Drew's an engineer. I work for a local news station, and I also teach Sunday School. We're local, which I think has been a big misconception. Our setback amendment request is simply to get the lots that we own here in line with the rest of our neighbors, as you can see on Carnivan Parkway and apparently the neighboring street as well, which have received those amendments just the same. When the subdivision was planned, setbacks on Carnivan were platted at a whopping 125 to 150 feet. However, none of the homes near these lots in our section of the street were built there. This part of Westmead is incredibly hilly, sloping steeply upward from the street level at a grade that sometimes approaches 50%. Starting right after the land was platted and continuing in the subsequent decades, every single lot on this entire street has successfully received a setback amendment. The new setbacks for the built properties range, as you heard, from 58 to 75 feet. If you drive down Carnivan in this section, you'll see every home is set in that range. My husband Drew and I have read through those comments that are against this request, and it appears almost all of those speaking out have been just fundamentally misled about who we are and what this request entails. So with so much misinformation going on, I just want to tell everyone that my husband and I are not developers. We don't build homes or flip them. Drew is pretty handy. He's an engineer. So if a neighbor needs help tiling a backsplash, I would be willing to part with him for an afternoon. But that's pretty much it. We have enlisted teams of geotechnical and civil engineers who have advised us with their expertise. who have advised us with their expertise, though. We bought the land under an LLC easily set up in a couple minutes on the internet to protect me because of what I do. It's a security concern for the public to simply be able to Google where I live. Drew and I plan to build our own home on this property. We want to keep nine of these 12 acres and put one single home on it. The original owner of the property refused to sell us the nine acres alone, and unfortunately, we're not wealthy. To afford to move forward with our dream, we have to sell those remaining three acres, which account for three of the side lots and all but mirror the developed lots across the street from them. We love this neighborhood and how engaged everyone is who lives here. It would make no sense to us to come in and try to change the feel of the area at all. The request is to quite literally get some vacant and neglected lots, which have served basically as local dumping grounds and are filled with invasive honeysuckle, which Drew and I have spent months with our own two hands clearing out, to finally get in line with the rest of this street. It's been built out since the 1960s, and maybe help some of our neighbors suffer a few less allergy attacks on the way. We're asking for our setback to equal the average of the setbacks of all of our neighbors. That's the request. It's exactly in line with what zoning requires. We sent personal letters to every home on this street asking anyone with questions or concerns to call us, and we never heard from a single person. Beyond keeping the street standard and uniform, there are many other benefits to decreasing the setbacks, which is why everyone on this street has been granted this request in the past. What we've seen from our neighbors and have confirmed with the geotechnical engineer is that development requires cutting into the rock of the slope and clearing the front of the lot. But the back portion of the lot could remain mostly untouched if the setbacks were allowed to move forward. Without this amendment, a future builder would be forced to clear the entirety of the lots, building higher up and on less stable soil, depleting the area of many more trees and other needs for local wildlife. The geotechnical survey of these lots revealed that building higher up could be less safe and more costly. However, it confirmed that building in the middle ground, as all the neighbors have, would be safe as long as proper stormwater management is taken into account, which is something we, Metro codes, and geotechnical engineers would take very seriously in moving forward. With the lots backing up to the Belle Forest and Nashville Highlands ecological area, ecologists who spearheaded the move to preserve all that land have actually helped me through this process. They've told me how important it is to create as large of a buffer in the back of the lots between the homes and the forest land. I've exhausted efforts to try to sell this land instead to conservationists or to Metro for preservation or recreation space, reaching out to some two dozen people over a number of months, including several Metro Park staff, many at the mayor's office, several Metro council members, and multiple conservation groups in the area. Remember, we want to sell three of these six lots. One conservationist responded saying no. The only other person who responded was Councilmember Druffel, who lamented that getting the money to buy this land would be too tricky, despite the fact that I was willing to part with it at below-market rate in order for it to be preserved rather than developed. If that has changed, we would still be open to having that conversation. If not, and given the crisis of supply and demand within the Nashville housing market, it seems apparent that these lots will eventually be developed, whether the setbacks are changed or not. The amendment would increase the safety for future residents, preserve more of the area's natural ecology, and rather than have three additional houses looming over the neighbors disturbing additional soil, it would allow the homes to be built in the same vein as the rest of the street. All we want is for our setback to equal the average of our neighbors. To reiterate, the neighbors on Carnavon Parkway who have sent comments opposed to this have all received the exact same setback amendment we are currently asking for. Some 20% of those comments came from only two households, one which received the amendment for 75 feet, one for 58 feet. We simply ask for the same treatment the planning commission has given every one of our closest neighbors, and to listen to their experts on their planning staff. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. All right, anyone wishing to speak in support? All right, seeing none, anyone in opposition? Come on up, and everybody gets two minutes. Whoever wants to speak, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Emily Grebel, and I believe I have five minutes.
Did you, ma'am, so?
Yes.
She requested, yep?
Thank you. I live at 194 Carnavon Parkway, a property adjacent to one of the six being requested. And I'm here representing both myself and also the larger community from Westmead Park Neighborhood Association, which opposes these variances. If you're with our group, if you could just stand up so that you can see the number of people who are here with us today, thank you. So over the last few days, I've collected names and comments of many of my neighbors, which is at the end of the packet that we've circulated to you. There's over 120 names on this list, all of whom live in the neighborhood. Many of these people are in their 70s, 80s, 90s. There's even 101-year-old Jerry Neal, who could not be here with us tonight, and I hope to be their voice. In the petition, you'll read comment from someone like Rochelle McIlpin, who lives a little way downhill from these properties, who fears landslides, mudslides, runoff, and drainage problems that will result from approving these setback variances, as has been documented by the developers' own engineers. You can see photographs on Pages 2 and 3 that were sent by Trenton Ellie Rosenbloom, who lived down the street at 155 Carnavon, and whose home sustained serious damage during mudslides and landslides in 2010. They were displaced for 11 months, and they are concerned that other people will face the same thing. Michael Veronkob notes it's a matter of public record from the late 70s that these lots are unbuildable due to their grade and access to sewage and stormwater, as Councilman Druffel said at the very beginning of tonight's meeting. And Nashville Next specifically identified the last 1,900 feet of Carnavon Parkway as part of the Nashville's Green Network, which provides ecological services and wildlife habitats. Now, the developers here are arguing that this is a precedent issue from variances granted to neighboring homes, including mine. And this is problematic on several grounds. I'm a professional historian. I work at Vanderbilt. I'm actually the chair of the history department at Vanderbilt. So I say this from a professional capacity. We can learn something from history, and we can build upon that knowledge. This is not 1967, this is 2022. This neighborhood is different, our development patterns are different, and our knowledge of this land is different. We have more frequent severe weather events in Nashville. We have tornadoes, flooding, heavy rainstorms, and we know very well what destabilizing this environmental makeup of our neighborhood can do. These variances would not only destabilize the ecosystems and soil of their own plaits, but also those of surrounding lots. The very minor clearing that Sunnyside LHC has already done in this site, some trees and shrub removal, and the excavation and building of a short, level driveway or Macadam Road has already caused substantial changes to silt and stormwater runoff. If you actually turn to Pages 8 and 9 of the handout, you'll see images of my 10-year-old son, Thomas, in two different places that reveal the severity of the erosion that has already taken place. The cul-de-sac at the end of Carnavon Parkway that you've seen in these images, which is the road's highest point of elevation, and which is where these six lots are located, is consistently coated in silt. During freezes, the entire cul-de-sac and a portion of the road turns to a muddy, slick sheet of ice, which extends about 70 meters, turning the entire road into this sort of frozen flow that originates from the new driveway. As you can imagine, this is really difficult when you're trying to take your eight-year-old and 10-year-old to school on a January morning. It's also difficult when you are 101 and trying to take your daily walk. When the temperature is above freezing during large storms, there's silt buildup from the drainage ditch that runs alongside Carnavon. All of this began when Sunnyside LLC cut their road. They have taken no apparent steps to remediate silt or water runoff. The local ecosystem is already being destroyed and will be destroyed more through these variances. But there is another major difference between these lots and the ones that previously received variances. They are physically different. As you see on Pages 4 and 5 of the handout, where we've done studies of topographic maps developed by Matthew Warsnick, who will be speaking momentarily, you can see they indicate an average slope of 33 degrees, which is more than 25% than the built lots across the street. It is not equitable, fair, or equivalent to grant variances today because they were granted in the past in a different and dissimilar location at a different moment in Nashville's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
Hello. I only got two minutes. My name is Matthew Warsnick. I live at 194 Carnavon. I'm a professor of architectural and urban history, and I'm also trained and practiced as an architect. My lot butts the property under consideration. First, I want to point out that before buying this lot, a little less than two years ago, I reviewed the zoning documents that ensured the building would be either... that any building on the lot would be either remote or prohibited. I reference here both the plat maps that you've seen projected and the 1977 statement by this commission that the lots are unbuildable. But for the remainder of my time, I'd like to draw your attention to Pages, first Pages 6 and 7 of this packet, in which I've used, you'll see on Page 7, the upper drawing is a combination of the lot and my home, my lot and home, and my neighbor's lot and home, the two westernmost built units on Carnavon. And built from that, I drew a... Sorry, a sectional profile of the hillside with roughly my home located on it. You'll see that this is steep. It barely holds. The house was just a feet from being destroyed by a falling oak, and of course, that was also a risk to life safety. I also walk the hill weekly to identify emerging risks, and I employ a specialized arborist who manages the trees without damaging any trees in order to keep roots in the ground. If I can have you turn to the previous pages, Pages 4 and 5, you'll see a comparison with the lots that are being proposed. You'll see that the slope is substantially steeper. It's 25% steeper on the two lots that I've considered. And I know I'm out of time, but I hope you'll take a look at this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. My name is Mary Berazov, and I live at 177 Carnavon Parkway. If you refer to the map at the very beginning, I'm the Green Dot House. I have a 75-foot setback, and that was granted by Metro in 1985, '86. I also have a home that is built into the lot. Robert Anderson was my architect, and instead of clearing the lot, excuse me, we stepped my home. I have a three-story house, and all are on grade. That is how steep these lots are. This meeting is more about granting an easy yes or no to this variance. It actually opens a Pandora's Box. Lots 181, 185, and 189 have road frontage that is level with Carnavon Parkway. As you go into the lot towards the building site, the land rises steeply to an almost 90-degree right angle. Exposed on these three lots is rock face. If you refer to the map titled by Tennessee Division of Geology and the Tennessee Valley Authority, the title of this map is, quote, "Geologic Hazards Map of the Bellevue Quadrangle, Tennessee", of which Westmead is part of. It identifies the limestone formation Fort Payne, and I quote, "Fort Payne slopes greater than 20%, potentially unstable when disturbed, especially where jointing is parallel to access for excavation." Another publication by the state and TVA, excuse me, described the geologic formations of the Bellevue Triangle. Without getting too detailed, Westmead Park is Leapers and Cathy's limestone, and the thickness in feet of this formation is between 120 and 140 feet thick. We are talking about a lot of excavation. We are talking about ground shaking. We are talking about the hillside of hardwood trees falling down.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Come on up.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Evan Namias. I live at 173 Carnavon, which is the end of the barrel of the gun on the diagram that staff has put together. Appreciate your public service. But we've heard a lot tonight about character of the neighborhood and, you know, certain houses being granted setbacks. I don't have a setback variance. I'm 173, barrel of the gun. Everybody, when they bought this neighborhood, was put on notice that you need to have setbacks of 125 feet. Certain individuals said, "I need less space," or "I can't build without this setback." I don't think the applicants can show that any one developer, owner of multiple lots, sought a bulk or gross variance. Instead, individual homeowners said, "I need this for me," not "I need this to offset my expenses." So Westmead Park is not a PUD. It's not a homeowners association that'll tell you, "You can't have green shutters." It just says you have to have a setback. Everybody knew it when they moved into the neighborhood. And this is a neighborhood who has a lot... It has a lot of charm. It's walkable. People want to be there. People like these setbacks. I heard every architect and developer say, "Hey, look, green space, open space, that's what we're all about." Well, every house in Westmead was designed to have it, 125 feet of it. To grant the variance means that there'll be less open space. There's less green space if they move the houses closer to the street. And, sorry. Neighbors' cars are parked further back than the setback. So if you grant them a variance, now all of a sudden, I've got to see what... the new neighbor who bought one of these small lots, what they're having for dinner, and what's inside of their car. The setbacks are there. They are the character of the neighborhood, and I ask that you deny the request.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up.
I wasn't planning on speaking. My name is Rosemary Fisher, and I live on Clearbrook, and my mom lives on Carnavon, across the street from these properties. My... And I'm not a great public speaker, but my biggest concern is what's happening around Nashville for the lack of due diligence and concern of what's happening behind my property. The water damage. We personally had a huge landslide come into the back of our house during the flood. My mom's front hillside completely came off. Thank goodness I have brothers in the excavating business who helped fix it. But landslides all over. And then I know there was an article about the landslides and what they had to do with the rock that came down, the blasting. I would hate for them to have to dig into the hillside and blast and disturb any more of the earth. We had a... I don't know if anybody remembers, there was an earthquake right before the flood. Now, everybody made fun of me because my husband and I heard it, and I know that it happened, and they reported it the next day. All of these things shifted, and then we had the flood after that. And I don't know the years I've been raising my babies, but... Pieces of these, it sounded like a monster coming out of my hillside. Where we heard this earthquake, pieces of the hillsides coming down. Now, fair... Last thing. Oh, before that happened, there was a house built behind us, and we don't know if the landslide caused that. We don't know. There's an 11,000-square-foot home. No due diligence has been done. There's a lawsuit you might want to check out, Jocelyn Hollow suing five houses being completely flooded. Who didn't do the due diligence? Was it just passed and without care for anybody else? So that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Mary Kerr, and I live at 192 Carnavon Parkway. And I have lived there for 30 years. So what I'm going to do is bullet point facts. The facts that, yes, Sunnyside, they did get an engineer, and documented... And this is what they documented. Like I said, I deal in bullet points. Their documented concerns were, number one, landslide. Number two, mud flows. Number three, instability of slope. Number three, instability of slope. Now, remind you, this is an engineering company they paid for. Number three, water drainage issues. They also pointed out that construction may require blasting. Now, that's a whole other issue. So, if blasting would disturb the neighborhood, and it would also start destroying our ecological system. I'm asking you to do not approve this. The reason it is the way it is today is because it's not supposed to be built on. Don't take my word. Don't take the word of my neighbors. But engineering companies, that's what they know. These are their concerns, and those are the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, councilman, let's see if there's anybody else, and then, and then what we'll do is, we'll do the rebuttal, and then you can go last to have the last say.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to? That's our process, so. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, two-minute rebuttal. Come on up.
All of the concerns expressed today align perfectly with why we want to build in a lower, more shallow, and safer area as designed by the geotechnical engineer. We conducted both the feasibility and geotechnical study before ever buying this land to make sure it was safely buildable. Engineers confirmed for us in writing and in hours of meetings that all six lots are safely buildable with care. They said the rock and soil appear exactly the same as our neighbors, and building would be safe in the same vein as the homes across the street. Hence why we want to build in the same location as all of them. Neighbors who are here today have boasted to us how they have had no impacts because of stormwater, or even in the 2010 flood, how this section of the street was completely unharmed. Part of one of the many reports outlines what to look for in order to build safely. It has been completely misunderstood and twisted by those here today, including the honorable council member, as a reason why development shouldn't be allowed at all. The property had, the same owner, we're told, inherited this land and lived elsewhere for decades. It was circumstance and will that left that land vacant, not viability by any means. We only bought this land upon the recommendation of the engineering teams who told us, "Move forward with this. It can be done safely." If there's against, an argument against larger development standards in this part of town, please, let's have it. We'll welcome that. But this is not the correct agenda item for that. This is a very narrow discussion over setbacks for properties owned RS40 and specifically planned for residential housing. Three close neighbors are here today, only three. Mrs. Berazov herself applied for and received the exact same amendment. Her home currently sits at 75 feet, as she told you. The Warsnick Graybals have personally remarked to us how they have loved having a private forest across the street from them, except it's not their private land. And also, Mrs. Kerr, who just spoke, used our property as a dumping place for her rock, which created that problematic road that they claim we cut. That's not us. That was the neighbors who did that.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Her setback is 58 feet.
Now, look, we try to be very professional here. We don't yell. We don't talk out of turn. We don't go overtime. So, thank you. Okay. Councilman. Ma'am?
Is it possible to give you something that happened to that property when I?
No, ma'am. We're, the public hearing is. All right, councilman. We're losing control, but we're going to get it back. Councilman?
We're going to get you out on time, I think. Relative, I guess. So, there's a form here that all of you got, and at the top of it, it says unacceptable building lots. Okay? So, this is 1977. I don't know if we've redefined what unacceptable building lots are, but if you look at those against these lots, they're all unacceptable building lots, if I got this defined correctly. Right? Okay.
Yeah, all the commissioners have it, councilman.
So, I just want to make sure what I'm comparing is, is as it's defined on the Metro Planning Commission meeting, you can see the parcel numbers, and on this form, you can see the unacceptable building lots, and it's, they correspond. Okay? So, this is from 1977. That says these lots are unbuildable. So, the question is, have we redefined what are acceptable in terms of building? Now, I've gone there three or four times, and I look at it, and I just go, you know, I just don't see where this could, the potential could go. There's safety issues. Everybody's sort of reflected on the safety issues and all the other things. Once you start to cut into this area, you double the problems because you're taking the vegetation away. You're taking all the areas that are holding a very unstable land, and you're taking away. So, I would strongly suggest that we do not support the variance for all the reasons that have been given. I really think we're talking about, there's a reason nobody's developed this? You know, you got to think, any place we can find, we're going to try to develop this. There's a reason for that. It's really unbuildable in many cases. So, I would strongly suggest that you not support this variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate it. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Henley, you want to go first? You haven't gone first yet.
I appreciate you reserving that honor for me, Chair. So, this one, this one actually is interesting to me because these are the skills of projects where I do a lot of work and consulting with. And I think, I understand both sides of the coin here. I did want to address the councilman's talking point, and as I read through this, it was saying that these lots are not buildable specifically related to utilizing site-kept septic tanks. I believe that since then, the area does have sewer. I believe most of the neighborhood is on sewer now. So, the buildable lot was aligned with that specific construction type and specific waste management. But I do, I do understand that their, their comments were based on the topography of the sites, and it does, it does identify a challenge. I also think it's quite interesting that, as I was sitting here, I kept hearing a lot of solutions to challenges. It was, it was almost like if you guys were neighbors, and you were like, "Here's all the challenges I have. Make sure you think of this when you build your house." You'd have a very nice, you know, solution there. As I observed, most of the images that you sent, most of the homes, like, as they were built, they actually built retaining walls and drainage systems inside of their construction. And I think that would be what would be required for, for these lots if they were to actually be built. So, I think that there is some possibility that these areas and slopes will be reinforced by man-made structures versus just the natural progression of water. That's what we do all the time. I think it's just an area that has suffered from disinvestment or just an absence of investments. But with that being said, I do want to ask a question. I know these, these ladies are hard at work, so I feel a little bit bad. But the 70-foot setback was, was an average. But is there any precedence to where they could have requested a less, I guess, a less amount of a setback considering it was 58 feet as, as an example? And then, of course, the topography as a, as a, you know, a strong presence?
So, excuse me. So, with amendments to plats, typically, we would not amend a plat setback to less than what the zoning code requires because that would be a variance that would be heard before the BZA. And so, when Abby talked about sort of the different types of setbacks, there's zoning-required setbacks, and then there's platted setbacks. And in this instance, we have platted setbacks that exceed the zoning-required setbacks. And so, within that space, platted and zoning, the commission can amend without a requirement of a BZA approval. Does that make sense?
It does. And I know there was a specific, that codes may also deem that the setback may need to be different. So, it's, there is a lot of, there's a lot of layers to what the actual setback could, where it could land.
Correct. And that's why we included a condition to say that if the contextual setback, and this is the way that it works anyway, if you have, let's just take these off of the table. Let's say you have a 40-foot platted setback, and you go into codes, and codes calculates it, and the contextual setback setback is 50, then you have to go to 50. And so, if a contextual setback exceeds what is platted, then you have to utilize that. And so, we've included a condition to essentially say, if it's found that the contextual setback exceeds the 70, then they have to meet the contextual. The information that we've gotten from codes is that it may be 72, 75. It depends on which street it is because you use the nearest houses. And so, it could be that the contextual would be slightly greater than 70, but they would be required to meet that contextual.
Yep. I understand that. I mean, at this point, I'm, I'm currently inclined to agree with staff, but I do want to hear my fellow commissioners. I understand that as we move towards, this isn't a review of design for the actual, the actual structures. And I know we have codes and other departments that, that's their specialty. They have their own army of engineers, and they will dive into this. But I do want to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Councilman?
So, appreciate folks bringing in a lot, a lot more detail. I've read the staff report and again, went out to check out my, my fellow commissioners' neighborhood, apparently. So, but I do share the concern of neighbors. You know, when you sort of come into Carnavan Parkway, I mean, there's some degree of holiness, but as you get toward the end of the cul-de-sac, and particularly on this side, it's dramatically steeper. Seems to be that way. It's heavily wooded. And, and so, you know, there are a few houses that are across the street that are terraced and whatnot. And I'm kind of persuaded by the argument that because something was permitted in the past doesn't mean that it should, we should continue to do that. So, I too have a lot of concern about disturbing the soil, given how, given the steepness of the incline right at this location and, and removing probably a lot of soil and rock and also vegetation. I mean, it, I would sort of agree that it's, this is a little bit of a difficult case because, you know, if we do not reduce the platted setback here, the lots are still buildable. And so, I think the argument that, you know, something could still be built is, is valid. But, but I do have reservations about, about kind of cutting into these hills, particularly at a, at a lower elevation, that would sort of chip away at that terrain as it is today. So, I have concerns, but I'm still willing to listen to my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Johnson's recusing herself, so Vice Chair?
I think you said this when we started. What is our authority here? Are we, we are making the decision, right?
We are making the decision. I can ask Lisa to speak more directly versus it's not a new subdivision.
Right.
I think if it were a new subdivision, we would absolutely be applying the standards that we have today, in particular, very extensive protections of environmental and natural features. The subrugs today are very clear on those points. But these lots were already platted. And so, we're not approving a new subdivision. We're not approving new lots. We are addressing a setback. And in my mind, this may be overly simplistic. It's a bit of a risk assessment because we've heard from the codes, who determines what lots are buildable, that these are buildable lots. So, we consult, that was the first call, is to consult and say, "Are these buildable?" They are. And so, then you have to ask, well, what are the desired outcomes? My goal is always, given what we've done on conservation subdivisions, all the work we've done in rural areas, is always to protect natural features. So, we're, we're all for that. I think the question is a risk, and what is the, what is the most likely scenario where there's, those features will be protected? And I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you if you didn't approve the setbacks, what somebody else would do. And so, I think that's got to be part of your conversation, is, is it more advantageous to be closer to the street away from those environmental features? Clearly, there's environmental features here that we, we agree need to be protected. And so, Lisa, could you just speak to that specific authority to address the sub, the, that this isn't a zoning change, et cetera?
That's right. So, this is an amendment to a platted, an amendment to an existing plat, an amendment to a plat that was created in the 60s with the setbacks. As mentioned, this, there have been amendments to other lots within this platted subdivision. The, the amendment authority that the planning commission has is sort of within that zoning setbacks versus platted setbacks, and that space in between the two. It's your authority and your final say about the, sort of that space between the two when a plat, when a setback is established.
Okay. That makes sense. You know, I, I'm certainly sensitive to, as you just stated, preserving the environmental features. Listening to the, the property owners, it does sound as though, if, if what they're saying is right, it's sort of the best possible outcome for these buildable lands and that they are building one house and, and keeping at least six acres for themselves. And I assume then the three, I assume that that's the property in the back of the cul-de-sac, and then maybe selling the, the three on the side. So, you know, I mean, in terms of a lot of what we have seen in, in these communities, this is one of the more environmentally sensitive ideas, but we don't have any, we don't know any of those details.
Lisa, do we have details on the lot or sort of the placement of the home? Or is that a question that Chairman to ask to the property owner?
We, we don't have that information. I mean, we, so, planning would not be involved in any building permit review. And so, all of those sorts of details would be worked out with building permit. We did speak with codes to make sure that they could apply for building permits. We did speak with codes to get a better understanding of the contextual setbacks. And we also had conversations with stormwater about what they would be reviewing as all of the agencies would be reviewing it with their, with the building permit submission. So, we took the approach of simply reviewing it based on what the contextual setbacks were, what the existing platted setbacks were, and then our consideration of the level of disturbance based on current versus proposed.
So, Vice Chair, traditionally, we've always, if we, if you as commissioners have questions to the applicants, you know, we, we ask them. So, if we can, if y'all would, if one of you would come up to the microphone?
Have a sense of what your plan is, where your, what lots you're planning to sell?
Sure. So, we're hoping to keep lot 171 and 90, the two big ones, and then the next kind of pie-shaped lot. We, there are a few flat spots, actually, on some of these deeper lots. So, we don't have an actual plan in place yet, but the idea is for a home to be on one of the flat spots that we build. The next three side lots are the lots that we are planning to sell.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that, you know, kind of to cut the director's point, if these are all buildable lots, and I think, you know, Commissioner Henley did a good job, and as I read this too, it was very clear that, you know, these lots could be considered on a case-by-case basis. So, I, I don't think that there was a decision that they should never be developed. I think the alternative of selling one to, you know, all of these lots and ending up with six zones is going to do a lot more damage to the natural features than one, maybe possibly four homes, but preserving that entire cul-de-sac. So, you know, for that reason, you know, I think it does make sense to consider looking at the, at the revised plat, it to be consistent with the other streets. And that would make sure that those three lots are built sure that those three lots are built in a way that does preserve as much of that hillside as possible. I wish that we had some way of, some condition that protected us from sort of saying we were gonna, you know, that there's only going to be one house on those three lots, but I don't think we can do anything like that. That I, I mean, if there's any way of sort of protecting it to make it clear that, that I don't see how we have the ability to do that. I think, Lisa, would it require a new subdivision?
Yes, I think that if you were considering, that would take a consolidation plat.
Right.
To essentially combine two lots or-
Three lots.
-three lots into one. It would be a separate action from this amendment. That's right.
So I think when I weigh the alternative, I would rather see it developed in a way that pulls the housing closer to the street in the worst possible circumstance that, you know, they do end up selling all of the lots. I think this will be a better development pattern for that street.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Clifton?
I came into the meeting with a fair amount of discomfort about this plan because I've been out there a lot and because it seems to be the only, seems to be an area where there has been no change in setbacks from what I read in the original analysis for forty or fifty years, thirty-five, forty years. Most of these people that we're hearing from and that are in the packets, you know, there's been no change to setbacks. They've all bought, built, maintained based on current setbacks that they had, and now someone's wanting to develop, but they're gonna keep a bunch of it and not develop everything maybe, but that's not binding. We can't approve something, I don't think, with what we have now before us, which in any way is predicated on what a private owner, perhaps not through any deceit, but just circumstances, can't really fulfill. I just think there's a lot of, lot of questions about this. And, you know, there's a certain amount of it that's foreign to me. I mean, I live on a lot that's fifty feet wide and a hundred and fifty feet deep, and that's what I wanted. But these are people who bought into an area and have lived decades in an area where, where they knew what was happening. And maybe you and I don't think much of these, the large front lawns, but there's room for more than one kind of residential development in Nashville, and I like going to Westend. I'd rather be in Hillsborough, West End, than Belmont Hillsborough, but it's a nice place. I think there's a place for it to, there's an argument that it should not be built, built upon any more than we, than we have to. That's maybe not fair to people who bought based on an engineer's suggestion, engineer's analysis, but I'm not ready to go for this. I think, I was thinking, Jessica, that what you were asking was, this is ours to decide. I mean, it doesn't go to the council is what you were asking, sort of, right? And it doesn't. I mean, we're the final arbiters, and I don't think we have enough to vote for it. I think we need to ask some more questions and defer this. That would be my hope. I know I've got a lot of questions, and particularly since there's been no change to any setback since the eighties, and probably very few in the eighties. It sounds like more than one in the sixties, maybe, I don't know. We may not know that.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
There's been, as far as I understand the analysis, there's been no setbacks, changes to anything out here since the eighties.
So I was actually doing some, some back-of-the-envelope research over here because I was wanting to sort of understand the document that was passed out in relation to lots being buildable or not, and this was from nineteen-seventy-seven. And so there are one, two, three, four, five of these lots that are listed that have been built on since nineteen-eighty-five. And so there have been, there has been construction since the time that this was passed. The setback amendments were in the sixties, some in the eighties as well, so it's, they have been sort of over time when there have been setback amendments.
But none in the last forty, forty years or so, thirty-seven years.
I don't have all of the dates.
So Commissioner Clifton, I do think you bring up a good point, and what is in front of us is six different lots, right? That is not what the folks trying to build their house on, three of them, is. And so I think you bring up a good point to, of deferral, so that maybe we can get a better, because that's not what's in front of us. I mean, if these folks sold the land, then we would have approved it for six lots, and I think there's some discomfort for that. You know, less lots means less, you know, disturbing the slopes and that sort of thing. And so I don't disagree. I think potentially a deferral to have the staff work with the applicant to try to represent what they're really saying, and which would be different than this. I think there's some validity to that. Is that what you're-
That's where I'm going.
That's where you're going, okay. Okay. So we're still on discuss, we're still on discussion?
So, so as you said, it would be a separate action if we wanted them to consolidate those three lots into one?
They would need to file a plat to do so.
Okay.
They would need to file a plat to combine three lots into one.
Okay.
It's a, that would be a subdivision, that would be a replating.
Okay, so does that, what does that trigger? Is that like a new subdivision?
Those are typically administrative approvals. Lot consolidations are administrative approvals.
Okay, so I'm not sure that we could, we can, I just want to be really clear, I'm not sure, but we can't compel them to do this.
Right.
But they're at the hearing, they're hearing the commission's questions, and so my advice, based on what I'm hearing, would be to defer with the questions clearly at hand. So I've heard a question about whether there's an openness to reflect what has been stated here in a consolidation. They would still need to come to you to address the setback as a separate item, and so I would ask Chairman with your agreement, just to make sure if we are getting a sense of deferral from the commission, if there are any other questions that need to be answered during this period, because this is, Lisa, would this be on the sixty-day? Would we have any timing constraints? Okay.
Well, and let me say this, you know, I want the neighbors to know, we, look, I don't think that, so to be clear, this is a very tough case, okay? And you're, we understand what you're saying, and we're faced with a dilemma of trying to work this out, and that's our job. And so I don't think, this is the way I hear it, from all the testimony and the facts, is that these lots may end up getting developed one day. So I think the neighbors have to kind of go into this thought process that that could happen. And so the next question is, how much do they get disturbed? Maybe it might be smart to work with the applicant, because if they want to develop one house in a flat spot, now, we don't have to do that, and we can solve that, sir. Now, hold on, we, we try to resolve things professionally, obviously. If that can't happen, then we'll make the hard decision for you. So we can defer for a couple of weeks, and if we have to make the decision, nobody may be happy. So we're just trying to figure this out to where, you know, everybody is in a win-win situation, because we know it's a hard decision.
Can I ask one?
Ma'am, that's, you can't, but when we defer it, you can talk to the staff and you guys can work out.
It's for you guys to tell.
No, no, we're past that, unfortunately. You can ask, I mean, that's just, that's part of the process, okay? So, any other discussion? Vice Chair, any, or if the commissioners have any other ideas? I mean, let's go Vice Chair, and then let's see where the commissioners land.
Well, I also just wanted to make sure it was really clear on the record that, you know, just because we approve a plat setback, it doesn't mean that the house is automatically gonna, you know, I mean, there's a lot of other steps, right? They're gonna have to go in to get their permit, is it going to be reviewed, Stormwater will look at all of this, as Commissioner Henley said, you know, retaining walls will be put in if that's what's required. So this isn't like a blank slate to just, so, I mean, I feel like that's a really important point to remember, that we're trying to work with the property, and there will be a lot of other steps to get this done.
Very good point.
Commissioner Henley?
And this is from my understanding, so with our deferral, right, I'm not opposed to that, I just want to state that first. What do we improve? And that was kind of my earlier question. If seventy feet is the most appropriate setback from staff's recommendation, is staff going to be enlightened between the next time we see that seventy feet is not it? Because, because the goal is, and what I've heard from the neighborhood and the neighbors is, is either no development, because that's what we, that's what I hear that they want, it's not appropriate for the site, but these are buildable sites.
Yeah, that's probably not gonna happen, right?
Exactly. And so now, what I'm saying is if we send people away and we say, come back, are they gonna come back with something less than seventy, but then staff's gonna give us a disapproval?
So Commissioner Henley, I think for me, an enlightening moment was, well, there are flat spots on these other, on these three lots, and they might be further back, they might not be. So we need to know that, right? And then if these three lots get put together, then I think that brings more comfort, comfort, but then that's, that's what I think has to be, the applicant has to figure out. With us approving this, if we were to approve it or disapprove it tonight, you're getting six lots at either currently what it is or with the seventy-foot setback.
And to answer your question, I tend to be somewhat risk averse when looking at a scenario where you have a lot of environmental features that are entitled. And so I tend to want to try to find a way to mitigate that, and so I don't anticipate that the staff's opinion will change if, if they go back and do additional work. It's just that there seems to be a reflection from the applicant that they're going to do a certain thing with the property, and it's helpful from a community perspective to have that before the commission. I think it just clarifies. The staff's view is likely not going to change because codes has said these are buildable lots, and with that determination, I want to take every step possible to protect those features.
Thank you, Director.
Agree. With more time and insight, a plan can be much better. I agree with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Henley. Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. I think what I've been hearing Commissioner Henley say, and what even my observation of the site is, which is not professional, but is that while this would probably not make some of the neighbors happy, but based on the testimony, but, you know, in some cases would a deeper setback make more sense based on site conditions? In some cases, would a shallower setback, even than the seventy that's proposed, make more sense based on the site condition? It seems to me that quite a few of these, I mean, there are a lot of differences between the lots, I mean, obviously just in the size of them, but, but the topography changes quite a bit on them. And so I, part of what gives me discomfort is the idea that we're gonna sort of make one decision evenly for six lots that have a lot of just visual differences as well as layout differences. And so I guess I'm wanting to go to see, explore a little bit more, as I understood it from staff, if the variance that makes, if the setback that makes sense for a buildable site that best preserves environmental features is less than seventy. And if that is not something that we can do because the, because of the contextual setbacks, could these owners or a potential future owner go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to review that? And if so, how would that process be different, maybe on, even on a lot-by-lot basis, than one blanket application of a seventy-foot setback? Just how would that be different?
Certainly. So what you all are reviewing, of course, is an amendment to a platted setback. You all are constrained by looking at the area between a platted setback and the zoning required setback. Board of Zoning Appeals is the body that can make, per state law, is the body that can make variances, which would be less than a zoning required setback. Let me first, sort of as a clarification, the seventy-foot would be a minimum setback. If a geotext study or something, and they're working on it, shows that further back is better, you could go further back. Seventy would be sort of the minimum, if that makes sense. The Board of Zoning Appeals process is, we would not be making a recommendation on that. They are typically handled on a lot-by-lot basis. An application is made to the Board of Zoning Appeals, notices are required, similar to noticing for a subdivision. Typically, they are considered based on unique features of a site, so topography would be considered, of course, for any sort of Board of Zoning Appeals process, but they are done typically on a lot-by-lot basis.
Well, I mean, thank you for that, and, you know, as I've said, I mean, a lot of times historically, council is averse to BZA because sometimes folks feel as though the BZA is how you get out of zoning, although that's not necessarily true. But, but I do kind of feel like, you know, I think the lots on the south side of Carnavon are most similar, but obviously the ones at the end of this division are noticeably different in a number of ways. But I think that's just what I'm trying to get to, is to say that, I think even to Commissioner Clifton's point, that, I mean, we can reduce the minimum setback, right, through this process, but I don't know that that gets us the, necessarily the best outcome for the unique characteristics of each of these individual lots. I guess that is what I'm struggling with and not having a lot of information. I think, I think one of the neighbors spoke about the house that she had, which was built into the rock formations in a certain way, and that is certainly an approach to building that can be done, and I think we even have more people in town that can do that today than, than we had in the past. But like I said, I'm a little bit more comfortable with that on a case-by-case basis for these lots than having a blanket approach. I guess that's where I'm kind of coming from.
I do want to make one point of clarification, I'm sorry, in case it wasn't clear. So if they wanted to just reduce the setback to seventy feet, that is not an action of the Board of Zoning Appeals, because the Board of Zoning Appeals only consider things that are less than zoning required. And so if they wanted to take this exact request to Board of Zoning Appeals, that's not a Board of Zoning Appeals request, it's a you request, because it is not less than what zoning requires. So they couldn't take this request to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's not the appropriate body, you are.
And so can you just remind us all, what is the, what is the setback?
If they wanted less than seventy feet, then it would be Board of Zoning Appeals, but if they, if they want what they're requesting, it's you all.
Right, okay, like, I know, I'm probably tired at this point, so, so right now, the setback platted is one-twenty-five to one-fifty. They're coming to us to reduce it to seventy.
Yes.
Which is less than the one-fifty.
Yes.
If they wanted to reduce it further.
Then that's Board of Zoning Appeals. But they couldn't take this request to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or they couldn't take even an individual, one of these lots, to get a seventy-foot setback at the Board of Zoning Appeals, because that's not a variance.
But they could take it to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a fifty-foot setback.
Fifty, yes, but, right, what they're requesting is not a Board of Zoning Appeals request, it's not a variance.
Okay, thank you.
So I thought it was interesting, Robert Anderson House, my house was designed by Robert Anderson as well. I love his work, I appreciate the history there. So we're kind of in, really in a tough spot, obviously. It's a tough case, very rare case, because it's not a new subdivision, right? So we don't see these often. I don't think Stuart and I have seen hardly any of these over the years we've been on the commission, many times, maybe for me, once, twice.
It's pretty unusual that it's something-
It's very unusual. So very rare case for us. We're not used to these, so it's taken a little more time for us to discuss these and get to all of the facts, and we appreciate everyone coming down. I'm sorry, I gavelled so strongly. Sometimes it gets rowdy, and we get, get us back to normal. So I appreciate everybody coming down, though, seriously, both the applicant and everyone else. But I'm feeling the wind of a two, two meeting, a deferral, is it two meetings? What are you thinking, Commissioner Clifton? Are you-
I was thinking that.
So any other discussion? I think Vice Chair, maybe we're on a-
One more question. I do support a deferral, whatever recommended time. I do also see Commissioner Henley's point that I'm not a hundred percent sure how much will change, although I would encourage the applicant to consider the plat, the lot consolidation. But, I mean, they could have come in here and requested a subdivision request, right? I think, Lisa, they could have not come here at all and could have gone and gotten a building permit. Right. Or they could have come and said, we want to re-subdivide these lots, and then some of our things would have kicked in to make sure that we are protecting steep slopes and stuff like that. But to your point, these were buildable lots, and that probably would have been, we would have, something would have happened, I mean, they would have been developed. So I guess I, you know, I just- So, I guess I, you know, I just kind of go back to someone's going to build on these lots, and if bringing them closer to the street is going to protect the hillsides, I, you know, I just don't know that—I don't think my opinion will change in two weeks or two, four weeks, but—
So, Commissioner Clifton, do you want to make a motion to defer two meetings?
I just—yeah. If it can be a simple motion, just that we defer this for two meetings.
That's a simple motion.
Yeah.
And it's a proper motion. And Lisa has a question, because she's going to say—
I just want to make sure that we are clear as to what staff's direction is during the time of this deferral.
Lisa, I'm going to—we're going to have a conversation. Everyone heard the discussion, and so, we'll have a conversation about the consolidation. I do think having a discussion from Councilman Withers' comments about the diversity of features with each of the six lots and see if there's any more we can gain about a more specific approach to address some of the character features that you addressed. And I think this was just good for everyone to hear sort of what the standards are and how we would likely look at the question as well. So, unless there's any other questions for us, I think we're good, Chairman.
We have a proper motion? Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? All in favor of a two-meeting deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Eyes have it? It's deferred two meetings. All right. So, that concludes our items for public hearing. And so, now, we are on historic. Commissioner Johnson, anything on historic?
Yes.
And if everybody—hold on one second. So, we're still in an official meeting, so if y'all could step out and talk outside, that'd be great. Thank you all very, very much for coming down. I know it can get pretentious. All right, go ahead. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have very exciting news to report, because Councilman Syracuse initiated historic tax abatement program, and which I believe passed third reading on the 20th. So, we are able to utilize that program. So, 166 Second Avenue, the rear building, and Arcade, and Gaddis Firehouse, those are all subject to historic property tax abatement program. So, they will be restored, and also the Arcade and Gaddis Firehouse will be recommended to council as a historic landmark. So, very, very exciting meeting we had yesterday. And Commissioner Clifton, we welcomed Commissioner Cashin. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very informative. Parks, Jeff is not here. Executive Committee, the only—the only thing we have is—well, not the only thing from—the—we have a special call meeting on October 6th, so just make sure—and that's going to be the—
That's going to be at the school board. If you have committed to coming, we are urging you strongly to be there and to let us know if for any reason you have an issue.
Yeah.
We do have a tight attendance situation.
Because that's the East Bank approval.
Yes.
Is that meeting going to be taking votes?
Yes.
Yes.
At a special meeting that we had two weeks' notice of? A week, a month?
Yes, we had proper notice.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm—
Yes, no, it's okay. We know you're not—
I'm out of the state.
We're sorry, sir. There's some unforeseen circumstances on the timing and so, we apologize.
I hadn't really took that part off, but I still can't do it.
Okay, that's okay.
Just to confirm, that's only—so, like, when we just did a two-meeting deferral, that was to the next regularly scheduled—
Regularly.
Correct.
Regular meeting.
Correct, yes.
Special meetings of council.
Okay, yes, yes.
Alex, is that—
I'm not 100% sure. I'm going to have to look at that.
Well, we're not 100%, sir. Well, we can reconsider our action.
Do you have a motion to clarify?
Yes, so, how about this, Stuart? Since you were the motion maker, you clarify that it does not include any special call meetings, regular meetings.
What he said.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Eyes have it? It's two regular meeting deferral, not special. Thank you, Alex, for being so patient with our loose Roberts rules procedures. All right. So, Director, report anything else, Director? Councilman, you're the last.
Just want to thank our awesome staff again. I've been following them around like a little puppy dog for all of the—just about all the East Bank meetings. Really, we had a great—I think a really great discussion with the MTA, with the committee that's called NICE, the NICE Committee, and they asked some of the hardest questions I've heard so far, and that was a really good discussion. But we've also had four meetings with the Affordable Housing Task Force on that topic. I think those have been good discussions. We're working toward having some policy recommendations that we can bring forward, I think specifically for the metro-owned land, 100% of which is in District 6, I'll point out. Very supportive of where things are going with that as the district council member, but look forward to your thoughts on that, too. I think the other topic that we're having a lot of community conversation around is bikes and mobility and all that. And so, the planning staff are working with Walk-Bike Nashville to have a meeting next Tuesday at Warner Arts Magnet at 6:00 PM. And so, I hope that my very vocal constituents who are on that topic all the time will step off Twitter for a moment and come to a physical meeting and have a conversation. That'd be great. I'm sure we can come up with good things. But just want to thank all of our staff for the outreach that's gone on to just so many different groups and for everyone that's participated in many, many of these in-person discussions. I think at the Sports Authority, when the presentation was given, Anna Greider was asked how many responses we've had to the survey, and it's a number that I thought was a good number, but I think some of the Sports Authority commissioners felt that we could have some more, so I want to give that as a final plug for the night, to have everyone please get us your survey responses by the end of next week, because we—every one of those counts, as we have shown with the prior survey that had a lot of responses. And we actually—the document included verbatim what every comment was. I think that is remarkable transparency to have on a website for the East Bank planning study, and look forward to seeing that again. So, just want to give that final plug to folks to please complete your surveys, and commissioners can give feedback on surveys, too, so.
I'm embarrassed. I don't know currently. Yeah, and there were 300 or so recently, but I don't—I don't want to speak to it because I haven't gotten an update in the last couple of days. But this is in addition to, I mean, dozens of meetings. So, we have been pounding the sand. This has been one of the most exhaustive kind of engagement processes we've done. Well, I was going to say exhaustive, maybe a little exhausting, too, but thank you to the councilman for his tireless efforts to help us engage and reach the community.
Thank you, Councilman. We're very impressed with all you've done on this project, so thank you. We are ready. Is there a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.